Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 28th River Falls Council Meeting. First, we're going to do a stand, say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Amy.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Caro.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morsat.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Okay, next to our approval of the minutes from the October 14th meeting and workshop.
I still move.
Second. For a second, questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next move on to approval of the bills with Councilmember Bierstedt.
Mayor Council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $1,542,433.30, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Okay, for a second on bills, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, next move into public comments, um, before we begin public comments, just to let anybody know if you're here for the public hearing on the bid assessments or the city budget, if you want to wait till those public hearings to talk, that'd be fine, um, there's nothing wrong with that, and everybody else now would be the time to talk. So, I want to, uh, I just want to thank everybody who has shared their thoughts with the city, um, whether through testimony, petitions, or emails, we value your input and recognize that several people may wish to speak tonight on one or both development proposals. As always, comments are limited to two minutes, and we ask that you avoid repeating the same points over and over. Um, the council has reviewed the plan commission and park board minutes, the plan commission video, and all written correspondence received. And after we get done with public comments, then the council will hear from staff and deliberate on these items. So, go ahead.
You had a longer lead-in than usual.
I just want people to have a little work.
Good evening, I'm William Hansen, N 8723, 1025th Street, River Falls. Thank you Mayor Toland for the act, asked the city event last week, it was very interesting. I'd like to remind everyone tonight of the importance of our Junction Falls Dam and hydroelectric generator, which produces over 1 million kilowatt hours of energy each year. The sale of this renewable energy, which benefits our 7,400 electric utility customers, also benefits the city through an annual payment in lieu of taxes. It reduces the need also to burn over 1 million pounds of coal. The Junction Falls hydro license has been renewed for 40 additional years, and we can now continue to use this valuable resource of, for electricity as long as the city chooses to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Eric Amundson, 500 Marcela Court here in River Falls. I just wanted to make a couple of comments really just regarding the two developments that you are going to take action on this evening. Uh, the one in Man Valley, I know there's been some discussion on that, I did do some research from the time that I came and spoke with the plan commission. For the most part, I'm okay with what's going on out there, there's a few concerns, but not anything that I would consider a deal breaker, um, with how things are progressing out there and what the city's plan is for that. The issue that I have is for the development in between, uh, the, the Woodridge Drive east and west off of Powell Avenue there, um, you're talking about setback restrictions on that, taking away one-third of the width, it's going from 75 to 50 feet. I know we do have some current developments within the city, I believe on the south side of town, if I remember correctly, that, that we allowed those, those restrictions to the 50 feet. We've got some serious traffic issues, parking issues, potentially even some safety issues with fire, police, things like that, uh, mail, garbage pickup, um, I see the same exact problem happening over there, I really don't want to do that. I am definitely not one of those that says not in my backyard, I understand development, I don't have an issue with it, but let's be responsible with what we're doing. All of the housing over in that area, from the south of Powell Avenue, that is, that is R1 Housing District, you know, um, is zoned R1, I mean, single-family residents, twin homes, things like that. Then on the north, when you have the Woodridge Drive addresses, the homes that are in there, these things are on one to three acre lots, and now we're going to try to cram in 95 units into an R2, what is basically R1.
15 seconds.
Thank you. So, those are my major concerns, is that trying to pack in way too many units into what is a housing that is, I will basically call it essentially R1, I don't know how that thing ended up as an R2, but those are my major concerns is that, um, with just kind of that stuff, yep, thank you. So, anyway, I have other concerns, but I wanted to allow several others to comment, I appreciate your time. Okay, again, okay with Man Valley, but I hope that each of you vote no on the Powell Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council members. My name is Cheryl Hoffman, I live on 97 East Woodridge, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Woodridge Neighborhood Association, plus the 204 who signed the petition. Our neighborhood includes 78 homes on 48.5 acres in the township of Troy, Zoned Egg Residential. The new development proposed next to us within the city of River Falls covers 25.5 acres and proposes 93 homes. That nearly doubles the density of Woodridge on behalf of the acreage. This proposal also includes variance changes such as measuring lot width to the foundation instead of the eaves, increasing the number of approved lots from 74 to 93, that was originally stated in the May consult plan. These changes do not fit the established character spacing or layout of our community. If approved, this development would add approximately 460 more residents, 180 additional vehicles, using the same roadways as walkers who will enjoy, who enjoy walking the Woodridge Loop that does not have shoulders. This raises serious safety concerns for our families, pedestrians, and children who walk and bike in the area. We are also concerned that the same proposal was rejected by the Plan Commission on October 7th, yet is now being brought forward for council approval. How can a recommendation that was denied just weeks ago be reconsidered without change? The Woodridge Neighborhood Association does not accept any of the deviations requested by the developer. If the council votes to approve the project, our association will consider appealing that decision. Finally, at the last Plan Commission meeting, we noticed several other developments seeking similar variances. This pattern of relaxing established standard risks underestimates the thoughtful plans and safety principles that have long guided River Falls. We respectfully urge the council to stand by the Plan Commission's decision and deny the variance request to protect the character, safety, and integrity of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration, let God guide you, what is best for the people of our community. And thank you for Eric speaking too.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, Council, this, my name is Dave Spurgeon, I'm 76 West Woodridge Drive, part of the Woodridge, uh, Neighborhood Association. I'm going to read a statement here from Laura Schatz, my neighbor, who couldn't be here tonight at the last minute, had a health problem in the family. I believe I agree with everything she's saying, so, here we go. My name is Laura Schatz, I live on, uh, Woodridge Drive with my husband, we bought our home in 1992 and have seen a lot of growth in River Falls, I grew up in Chicago, so I know city living. I have loved living a more rural life in River Falls, I especially appreciate, uh, that we are designated a tree city and have parks and trails in the Kinney, the space between our homes and a garden for kids to play. We are not living on top of each other. I'm requesting that the city of River Falls deny J.P. Brooks' request to deviate from the lot size within setback standards on Powell Woodridge Drive Lot. Instead, build within the current standards allowed by the city of River Falls. We don't understand the drive to deviate from those standards. At the June 3rd public meeting, the developer estimated there will be three, would be three single-family homes per acre for a total of 74 homes. Drawings were shared with single-family homes and two, three-car garages. We then received a letter in September with new plans for 93 single-family homes and twin homes, uh, with the developer asking for smaller lots than the city allows. My concerns with this higher-density development are, one, potential issues with congestion and accidents on Powell, limited parking and pedestrian safety in the neighborhood, two.
15 seconds.
Excuse me?
15 seconds.
Continue.
Oh, okay, somebody was.
Close the timer.
Looking for the camera.
You've got some more time.
Two, disrupt neighborhood character and reduce property values, three, lead to strain on public infrastructure of our schools, parks, and emergency services, and consider appropriate drainage in the new development within a half a mile of the Kinney. Number four, finally, allowing this deviation of the current lot standards undermines the public trust in the planning process, it sets a dangerous precedent for future development. City of River Falls' mission and value statement includes act with integrity by being transparent, honest, and keep commitments, to put people first with empathetic listening, to consider future generations by leaving things the way we found them.
Time.
Time's up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, my name is Mark Vinyl, I live at 521 Oak Park Circle in Menominee, Wisconsin, and I was just here to stop by tonight and, uh, really thank all of you uh, and the city of River Falls for allowing, uh, GFL and Waste Management to participate in the, uh, bid process for waste and recycling services. Unfortunately, it looks like GFL was not the low bidder, but we are working really hard to, uh, become a better, uh, more prominent service provider in St. Croix Pierce County, western Wisconsin area, so, uh, be happy to answer any questions that you might have later on when you discuss, uh, item 13 this evening. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else?
Hi, city council members, this is Charles Erickson at 622 Hazel Street, and this is, uh, the first time I've been in this room for a long time. I'd like to start out my statement with a quote from Henry George. "The great cause of inequality in the distribution of wealth is inequality in the ownership of land. The ownership of land is the great fundamental fact which ultimately determines the social, the political, and the consequential, and consequently the intellectual and moral condition of a people." Building homes is a good thing. Building tiny homes and small lots is not okay. And I'd like to ask the city to move from, uh, a property tax-based system into a land-value, a tax-based system. Uh, it's more equitable and it deters land speculation. And, um, it'll be helpful for the city, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Dave Trechter, I live on 80th Avenue. When the dimensions of the housing development at the corporate part became clear, a few of us in the neighborhood went door-to-door to see how our neighbors were feeling about this. And there's only 60, 70 houses in our little area, we collected 91 names of people who were asking this body to pause the development. It's clear that you can, and, and it really gets down to the question of the, um, deviations. And it's clear that this body can allow whatever deviations you want, but I think the better question is, should you? I'm not opposed to development, I'm not opposed to increased density, even in our area, which is quite rural. But I think that that decision ought to be made in a thoughtful fashion through your committees, through your staff, and through this body, not in an ad hoc decision about a particular project. The particular, um, deviation that I'm concerned about is the reduction of the open space requirement from 1,200 to 837 feet, that's 30% reduction from, it's from your current regulations. And I understand those regulations may be under review, are under review, but until they're, they're there, you're making decisions that are creating a reality on the ground without a very thoughtful process from what I can see. Reducing the green space requires all the other deviations that are, the two other deviations that are in this plan. If you didn't have that many houses, and you should, according to your regulations, have a maximum of 187, not 255, then the issue of reducing parking, the issue of the setback would no longer be germane.
Time. Thank you.
For those of you in the audience waiting to speak, it's perfectly fine to queue up so that we have a flow.
Uh, Mayor, council members, my name is Mark Anderson, I live at 700 Leroy in the Collinswood Development. My wife and I are fairly new to the area, and the reason we were drawn here was because of the charm and character of the city. Uh, we understand and appreciate that development is going to happen, and we certainly know it's necessary for a city to grow, but it's also incumbent on developers, planners, and city officials to encourage the right kind of growth, particularly in an established neighborhood. My personal opinion is that this development, uh, does not reflect the, the best that we can do for River Falls, and I would hope that significant changes would be made before this project or any others like it move forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Paul Gerbeck, I live on 880th Avenue, and I am, I'm here to, to echo the, the sentiments that you just heard from, uh, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Trechter, particularly with regard to the, to the deviation from, on, on the open space. And I want to do it on behalf of the children. You know, there are going to be a lot of children that are going to be living in this area. And in this day and age, one of the big concerns that society has about children is that they're spending all their time in front of screens, and they're not getting outside enough. Well, if we just keep reducing the space that these children have outside and outside of their buildings, outside of their doors, then we're just going to make it easier and easier for them to stay on their screens. I have nine grandchildren, and most of them live in housing like you're proposing to build, but all of them have space where they can walk out their door and kick a soccer ball, play catch, play jump rope, ride their bikes, they all have something like that. And I implore you to please provide more space for the children to be able to do that. I noticed that you have, that, that the, in the proposal, there's citations of, of numerous other projects where you have granted these open space, uh, variances, and they're using this justification, but to me, it makes it all the more important, it says we're really setting a precedent that, that we're not providing what we really need for the children of our community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Dana Lynn Scott, River Falls Alliance for the Homeless, um, this may surprise you, but I'm really happy that you're building Man Valley project, uh, it includes 50, uh, low-income units, and, well, that's a small amount of what's needed in River Falls, it's a good start, I applaud you for finding a developer that will do this, I think a lot of the, the, um, comments that people are making are based on que, unanswered questions they have, um, and, and if it were possible, I know you don't answer questions during this, but if it were possible for the developer to provide some, uh, answers to those questions, I think a lot of the, uh, opposition, um, would dissolve. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, Tom.
Good evening, my name is Michael O'Connor, council members, mayor, I live on 1047th Street, which is a street that would feed directly into Discovery Drive, I've seen no information that is going to record in regards to, how is traffic going to be handled at intersection? You have one road in, one road out, 255 units, 300 to 500 people, if 20% of them are going to work at the same time, how's that traffic going to be monitored or, or addressed? There doesn't seem to be any bike or pedestrian pathways for those residents to get to River Falls. There doesn't seem to be much in the way of playgrounds for the children of the people who are going to be living there. The apartments are reduced size, so if you're, if they're in a smaller environment and need to go outside, where do they go? They can't walk to the city, I live on that intersection. It's not safe to walk to River Falls when you have 55 mile an hour speed limits there. So there's no pathway for kids to walk to the River Falls, there's no bike path, I know there's consideration for that, um, mulch path that goes behind the new, uh, development, but again, as everybody's been saying here, it's too many units for too small a space. I know developers have to make money, and I agree completely with Dana, we need more low-income housing, but you're basically going to create a little Gulag here, the people only can get in and out by driving, and is it going to be a safe environment for children? I don't know if that's really been addressed or considered here. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Laura Anderson, 880th Avenue. I open to the question, the 2022 housing report summarized that River Falls needs to add about 105 units per year, and also specified what kind of housing was needed. So with the building explosion that's happened since then, where are we actually at with that? City staff is working on compiling that data, but until that data is actually done, how can we justify that we actually do need this plan in this place at this time? As I read the comprehensive plan, I'm really quite proud of what River Falls values and aspires to. The confounding question is, how does that comp plan translate into actual numbers about density, setbacks, parking spaces, and green space? Well, actually, the plan doesn't specify any of that, it speaks in general terms about what residents value, yes, affordable housing, but also parks, walkability, bikability, safe and friendly neighborhoods, and connection to services. This plan in Man Valley is not that. High density was never brought up in the survey, because probably if you asked about anyone about putting over 200 rental units in their neighborhood, they'd be justifiably horrified, because a neighborhood cannot absorb and embrace all that. Indeed, I'm wondering if the city itself can embrace all that and absorb that in a healthy way and still maintain what it is that makes River Falls so special and desirable. The answer is, we probably can't. This planned development is an out, is an island outside of River Falls, this kind of developing is creating a bunch of islands, and it's not enhancing our community. This point is emphasized by the fact that there is no viable plan to connect this development to River Falls by a sidewalk, it would need to cross ravine, watershed, and wetland, a huge expense, even if it is allowed by DNR. This is disingenuous planning and promoting, and it's dangerous. The city has actually said they want these kind of deviations requested by developers to become the new standards, because increased density is more cost-effective for city infrastructure. And because if they don't, developers won't build at all. This isn't River Falls. We can do better.
The council, Mayor Dale Bukowski, 880th. From the city of River Falls website, "Our mission to preserve, restore, and sustainably manage River Falls' natural resources for current and future generations." I'm just curious on the Man Valley, uh, was an environmental impact assessment done? And even if an assessment isn't required, wouldn't River Falls want one done considering the importance River Falls places on the Kinney and our natural resources? According to the proposed GDP site plan, Man Valley Residential, stormwater is maintained in private ponds spread throughout the site to meet requirements. Where can we find those requirements? Are the retention ponds engineered to handle 100-year rain event or a 500-year rain event? Does the design consider the impact on the retention ponds from the substantial increase in impermeable surfaces? Although, although there are claims the runoff would not be any more than what it currently is, that doesn't account for the type of runoff. Instead of natural organic materials, there will be runoff from rooftops, parking lots, which is drip ga, drip gas, oil, asphalt oils, tire debris, lawn chemicals and pesticides, garbage that doesn't make it into the dumpsters or into the garbage truck when it's being dumped. To what extent was climate change, which means many more high precipitation events considered in the retention pond engineering? From the River, River, River Falls City website under natural resources, the watershed protection and stormwater management, green infrastructure like rain gardens, buffer strips, and bioswales help keep our rivers clean and reduce flooding, are there any of these planned in this 10-acre space? Reduced green space, based on the suggestion that the residents of the 255 units will have access to DeSantis Park, a park that was donated to the city as a public park, with the already 200-plus inhabitants of the Milltown residences, residences using as their personal space, it's becoming less and less of a public park. With the addition of another 360, um, adding 600-plus residents, DeSantis Park would no longer seem to be a public park, as over 800 renters would be using it as their green space. Thank you.
Thanks.
Benjamin Fox, FOC HS, 2529 Powell Avenue. I would like to thank the city for your consent agenda, number eight, public art, I think public art is important. I also think that a lot of public art could be do, greater than that. When I see that the city is donating basically the $148,000 to the Valley View, uh, LLC for affordable housing, I would like the city to consider any large donations on, you know, that size of project to also be, so that there's anything else, public art in that thing. Now, as to development, it has been now in 10 years since I've seen Man Valley, I see all of it, I see it from the hill. I find it interesting that today, of all days, after, a year after the grand opening, that people finally show up. I have known about this for a decade, the fact that these people show up here late, it's passive aggressive. So there's one of two things, either the city is not properly showing up how you communicate with people in these residences, you know, there's something missing in there, either between staff or the community that's missing in this communication and things. And then finally, I hope these people are ready, because the city put out the RFP for the 100, you know, the 255 units. Future plans have more high density in Man Valley, have industrial, have anything else, that is a growth for the city that funds your police station, man, you know, Kinney corridor, future regional parks. So I hope these people either kind of get used to it, or how they figure it out, because Man Valley will be developed, is, in the strategic things of the last decade for the city, with that, I thank you.
Yeah?
Kelly Bukowski, 880th Avenue. Uh, in 2022, the city of River Falls contracted with Maxfield Research and Consulting to, um, update the housing needs analysis for the community, it was completed in October of '22, at that point it stated that 317, later changed to 336 additional rental units would be needed by 2030, that's five years from now, 336 units. Since 2022, over 642 rental units have been added, 210 additional units are in process, 264 units have been approved, and 93 are waiting approval on a code deviation. So this results in over 1,200 units completed by 2026, when only 336 were surveyed to be needed by 2030, so this is. So this is four times the projection, which would explain why most of these complexes have availability. The current, the Upland and Milltown residents alone, built last year, have over 47 units available. In addition to these multifamily units, 102 additional single-family homes were improved in 2024. And today, Apartments.com lists 235 apartments available in River Falls. Zillow shows over 130 homes for sale in River Falls, quarter of them are under $300,000. And more housing organically becomes available due to downsizing, upsizing, death, moving out of the area, or those in need of assisted living. Given that existing multifamily housing options in River Falls are not fully occupied, it raises important questions about the necessity and timing of additional development. Building more units when current inventory remains available could lead to an excess supply, which may negatively impact property values and strain local resources. Furthermore, this approach overlooks the potential to revitalize, restore, and better utilize existing housing stock, ensuring that new construction is truly warranted based on demonstrated demand rather than speculative growth. The River Falls community is about nature, the community, rural town, small feel. Everyone I've spoken to is shocked about the proposed development, very disappointed with the direction the city is moving. We should be a town that takes pride in restoration and being a beacon of keeping history alive, instead of building cookie cutter apartment complexes that benefit no one. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, another Mark Anderson here. My name is Mark Anderson. I live on 880th Avenue near the Man Valley Development. It's been mentioned tonight that there's not a year-round safe way for pedestrians to walk to DeSantis Park or into town. Last week, the park board voted in favor of taking $317,000 in lieu of parkland dedication for this development. It's my hope that this $317,000 will be used to complete the trail to DeSantis and maintain it year-round. I hope it'll also be used for outdoor playground equipment onsite for small children. None is currently specified. Expanding a bit on safety and adding aesthetics of apartment buildings in general, I'm going to give three examples about berms and trees. When you're at the Dairy Queen stoplight, look toward the college. As you drive and look to the left, you'll see berm and trees, not adorn. When you're, secondly, down the street at Cemetery Road stoplight, as you look south and to the right, you'll see a berm and trees sheltering the duplexes. Third, as you drive towards Highway 90 or Interstate 94, you'll see a great example of berms and trees in front of the UI facility. That is a relatively new, huge industrial building. Its surroundings are visually pleasing. Berms and trees improve the aesthetics of areas 100%, not only for the people driving by, but to those on the other side by providing a visual, sound, and safe buffer. Let's start to improve the natural aesthetics surrounding the apartment developments in River Falls. It's my hope that you, the council, will not quickly grant deviations requested, but ask city staff and the developer to take a step back, right-size the development, improve the safety and aesthetics, and make it a better fit in our community.
15 seconds.
We owe it to the people and the children who will live here not to pack them in, but help them fit in, and give them a safe access to parks, schools, and the cities. If the developer feels that there is no way they can fiscally make it work by not having these deviations and density requested, maybe it's the wrong time to start this development.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go on to, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing.
Mayor, I think you had one more.
Huh?
It's up to your discretion, and I think you had one more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My name is, oh, can I move this down, or can you hear me okay?
Yeah, move it to where, yep.
I'm really tall, so. Um, to add on to what a couple people said, I also read the article that was about Okerstl and Lexi Larson at 675 Powell, that the 93 units would be right next door to my house, which, so obviously I have a little bit of a bias, because I don't need a new neighbor, but anyway. But I did look at the statistics, and I guess what was really shocking to me, which makes sense now that there's the numbers with how many places have been added, according to FBI statistics, which I don't know how exactly how accurate and how well they represent whatever, but in River Falls, it said 2021, there was four violent crimes. 2024, there was a total of 22 reported at least. So it's quadrupling over, what is that, three years? Which is concerning, obvious, for obvious reasons. But anyway, I think all those other people said everything else I needed to say. But I thought the crime statistics were very interesting, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Witt. My husband and I moved here to attend school 43 years ago. Loved the town so much that we stayed, raised a family of four children here, and we now live just west of River Falls on 880th. We hope many others continue to find River Falls a welcoming community and to choose to become part of it. But at this point, I'm not seeing how this development with the density housing and 255 units on 10 acres that's currently designed and being proposed is going to help welcome others who wish to become contributing members to our society, to our community. There are too many pieces that just don't seem to fit, and I think you've heard a lot of them today. And it doesn't seem like a match. Parking allocation in high-density areas differentiates quite a bit between urban and rural or small cities. There's no mass transit system here, no, basically, everybody has cars. I mean, they can't get anywhere without them. 360 has asked for considerably less than our current codes of two spaces per unit. There are no streets available nearby for safe parking. And so people park wherever they can find. By lowering the setback of those income-based housing portion of it, there's no place for people even to step outside or kids to play right nearby. We don't want to push people into those parking lots that are already overly congested, because it seems like we're building more of a hotel situation for them than an actual living community, and that's not fair to them. The traffic on M is much more treacherous than it was when our kids went through and grew up. Try adding 500 or more people coming out one, in and out one place, and walking, kids walking down M across the bridge, getting to and from town, and you're asking for, you're asking for a problem. We love River Falls for the way it values the environment and its people and their welfare, but we have to do everything to make sure we give that River Falls to people we're asking to help and move in.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Witt. That was my wife. I recently retired from teaching and spent the majority of those 38 years, not only teaching, but coaching here in River Falls. As a matter of fact, I had Scott's kids, Todd's granddaughter, and I coach Michael. So it's kind of crazy as I'm sitting there doing, looking at all this. My concern is about the 255-unit development that runs adjacent to a green corridor as identified on a map in the city's comprehensive plan. The Kinnikinnick River watershed, home to one of Wisconsin's premier Class 1 cold-water trout streams, needs to be protected. Expanding impervious surfaces, runoff, reduced infiltration, and, I'm sorry, like roofs, parking areas, driveways, and sports courts will increase stormwater runoff, reduce infiltration, and raise the risk of pollutants reaching the river. The city's own stormwater studies acknowledge that excess runoff can cause flooding, erosion, sedimentation, and thermal pollution. Heated runoff from pavement and rooftops can raise downstream water temperatures. Even a small increase can harm the trout population. Development that prevents infiltration also reduces groundwater recharge, which is vital for maintaining the Kinnikinnick's steady base flow during dry periods. The Kinnikinnick River is our community's most treasured and sensitive natural asset. Any development in this location should include major methods to prevent increase in runoff and protection of groundwater recharge. I respectfully urge the city council to require comprehensive environmental safeguards and transparency before approving residential uses within the corporate park. Thank you for your attention to this matter and for your continued leadership in protecting River Falls' unique natural resources.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Linda Foster, and I live on the corner of 880th and County Road M. In the comprehensive plan, walkability and bikability are listed as very important. Maps show this area on M as one of the highest-stressed areas for walking and biking around River Falls. Walking or biking on M over the narrow bridge should be enough cause for the city to rethink this. I've learned that really there's no current plan, concrete plan, for getting people safely into and out of town on M from the development. I would like to see the safety of my future neighbors put to the priority for this reason. We do walk along M to get to Discovery, which we love the path, by the way. However, we are wearing construction yellow and reflective gear, and we walk against traffic, and we are 100% alert at all times regarding our safety while walking along that road. I've also previously discussed with city staff just my concern of the traffic volume and excessive speeds that we experience either walking or hear from our home. It's a real situation right now on County Road M. Again, I believe that safe path or sidewalk connecting the corporate park residence to DeSantis is very, very important. And to me, safety is the number one thing for those children whose neighborhood school will be Westside School. Today, I did contact the Pierce County Highway Department and let the commissioner know of my concerns of the speeds. The River Falls Police is doing a great job monitoring speeds just past Apollo Road, but once they pass that 35 mark, those cars are going so fast, and I just really feel that safety is number one. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Gerald Gilbertson, 93 West Woodridge Drive. I like to hear that everybody's concerned about the Kinnikinnick River, about the watershed. Every spring, I got a river that runs between our houses, and I've seen that field half full of water. And where does that all go? Right down to the Kenny. In our neighborhood, I know that we've had three generations of families in our neighborhood, and now you're putting up trailer court, basically. So if that's, I'm just going to make it nice and simple, but yes, the DNR should be doing a study on this whole watershed issue, because there's going to be houses down there, I'll guarantee. They're not going to make a big enough pond for a water retention, because I've seen it for years. I've been there for 30-plus years. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Bridgette Ferracy, and I live at 14 Drive Run Road, and I'm a resident of Troy. And to the gentleman who spoke to the issue of notice, I just wanted to let you know that we, as neighbors, really close neighbors that will be impacted by the development, we were not notified of the meetings that were coming up. Thankfully, a neighbor from River Falls told us. We don't get a lot of information about this, and it is hard to monitor what's going on in Troy Township as well as what's going on in River Falls. It would be nice to have better notification of these kinds of developments and to make an effort to notify people beyond whatever it was, like 350 feet of the development, because it clearly has a significant impact on us. The other issue I just want to say is, we're relatively newcomers to River Falls, and we had a great opportunity to meet with the city staff when we moved in and had concerns about development plans coming right next door to the property we had just purchased. And they assured us that River Falls was developing in a way that was really cognizant of what the issues are environmentally, setbacks, and green space, and it was very reassuring. We come from the cities where a lot of public trust has been eroded by allowing developers to do whatever they want. And that's not, it's not good for neighborhoods. It's not good for communities. So I would say, you know, if you want to deviate from your zoning, go ahead and make changes to zoning. But don't just do it, you know, ad hoc. The first development in a new development, it sets a dangerous precedent. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on resolution authorizing special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of River Falls Business Improvement District. And Jolene Larson, who is the director of the bid board, will come up and give us a little presentation. And if there's anybody in the audience after that has anything they'd like to say about it, we'll have you up.
Good evening, Jolene Larson, 502 East Elm Street, River Falls, Wisconsin. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for your continued support of the River Falls Business Improvement District. I would also like to extend my deep appreciation to Emily Shively, who keeps us, our things posted, and keeps all of us on task. I would also like to thank Erica and her crew for their wonderful support in 2025, and I'll speak to that at greater length in this presentation. As most of you know our history, I won't go into great detail about it, but I will remind you that we've been in existence since 1989. And our goal is to improve and support the economic and historic Main Street of River Falls. Our borders are north of, north Division Street, south to Cascade, east to the businesses, and the businesses only on Second Street, and to the west, the Kenny Corridor, ending at the Dairy Queen, and then we pick up the chiropractic office right across the street there. We support the economic growth and vitality of Main Street in a number of ways. First, probably in the most measurable and the most public is visibly, is event promotion. We support the River Falls Chamber of Commerce, specifically funding the River Dazzle event that has now become a signature holiday event, starting over 20 years ago with a bunch of us dressing goofily, putting lights on, and parading down the loop downtown River Falls. It's now become a huge event with a lighted parade, chili crawl, bringing large amounts of visitors to our downtown and shoppers as well. And it's a family-friendly event. We also support the mini-events of River Falls business leaders, as you have as council people. We are now supporting them as well. I would like to take a moment to remind the folks that there's a trick-or-treat event Friday from 3:00 to 5:00 for those folks. And so kids of all ages can visit the businesses and get a treat this Friday. We also support the Music in the Park programming, and this year, we contributed to the rebuilding of their band shell structure in Veterans Park that was in disrepair. This event brings tons of folks to the center of Main Street, enjoy great music, and to visit the surrounding businesses as well, enjoying the white pathway. We also support various community celebrations throughout the year within our district. And one of those was when I think the Bridge just had their anniversary, so we helped support that as well. Our beautification projects is another one way we support downtown, and that's including the Second Street Gardens. These gardens are maintained by volunteers, and thanks to Erica and her staff, they've been watered and mulched, and the mulch is provided by the city. Erica has stepped up and really taken hold of that project and helped us immensely. Most of those gardens don't have water to them, and most of our volunteers are getting old, for lack of a better word. So, yes, I know, painfully, I'm painfully aware. So it's great to have some water and support for those gardens. So it's great to have some water and support for those gardens and we rely on our volunteer help. Nikki at the River Falls State Bank coordinates the gardens and we're thankful for all the volunteers, so the watering has been a great. We also help fund the hanging baskets on Main Street and the bridges that extend over the Kenny and Erica and her staff are hanging the baskets and watering the baskets and picking them up for us. And we support several local greenhouses. Earthworks Cedar Hill on Pearson's Forest are currently where we purchase those baskets locally, keeping all the money here in River Falls. For the past two years, we've been coordinating with Erica and her team and budgeting monies for help with the gardens and with general downtown cleanup. And I have to commend those folks. This year, I've heard very, a lot of comments, but 2025 was an exceptional year. Downtown really looked awesome, so I thank you very much. We also have recently sent out information to the bid members, reminding them on how easy it is to apply for a sign or facade grant. And we specifically fund grants for facades on the buildings in our historic downtown because the buildings themselves are not gonna go anywhere. It's really an investment in the infrastructure. We can't always guarantee the businesses that are going into them are going to be successful, but the buildings are here forever. And to date, we've invested almost a million dollars into the business district in the form of grants and projects. In 2025, we've been really working hard to gain a better understanding of potential future large projects that will impact the bid district. We are excited to learn more, more from the alley survey that's just been started that's coming up as we will direct us to potential future opportunities to help businesses develop better alley access for their businesses in preparation of a potential Main Street redesign. We are eager to be part of this conversation as we progress with planning and implementation. We feel it's critical to reach out to our constituents with this information. We also know that no matter if that project is a full project as everybody would love or a small project, small pieces of it or an integral part and we look forward to help fund depending on the size and scope of that project. We look forward to serving you in 2026 and we thank you for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'd be on here to try to answer them.
It's more of a comment and I'm very appreciative of the $1,500 grant that you gave to the Accessibility Awareness Program.
Oh yeah, I forgot them.
That, yeah, that's a program that I've kind of followed and tried to support as much as I can, but for those of you who don't know what it is, it's putting ring doorbells on businesses for people in wheelchairs or mothers with infants that are trying to go into a store and need some help, they can ring the ring doorbell and somebody from the inside can come out and give them a hand to get into their business. So the bid board gave 1,500. I do know that another program in, in the city, the Man Up Program, which is very similar to Power of 100 for the women, has also got them on their list for giving them some funds to do it. I think they need 4,000 bucks and it's a great program.
And we're eager to watch that program grow and as it, as they need more funds, we've been, you know, having communication with them, so.
Yeah, that's a great program. Glad to see that it has got some grassroots movement. Thank you.
Anybody have anything for Jolene, questions? Okay, thanks, Jolene.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so is there anybody in the audience has anything about the bid board they'd like to say you're talking about? Okay, we'll close that public hearing and we'll open up the council hearing and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the special police powers for the benefit of the bid board.
Second.
First and second, anybody have questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll close the council hearing again and open up a public hearing. This is a first reading on ordinance 2025 dash 06, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of River Falls, Wisconsin for the year 2026. And is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the council, or close the public hearing and open up the council meeting for any council members, any questions on this? Okay, next we'll move on to consent agenda. First, we have acknowledgement of the following minutes. The Library Board from 9/8, the Bid Board from 8/12, Historic Preservation Commission from 9/4, the Plan Commission from 7/1, the Housing Authority from 9/10, the Park and Rest Advisory Board from 8/20, Utility Advisory Board from 9/15. Next, we have a resolution adopting the 2026 Fiscal Plan and Capital Improvement Plan. Then we have a resolution approving audited financial report for period ending December 31st, 2024. Next one is a resolution amending the fee schedule and the last one is a resolution approving revisions to the percent for art policy and adopting project-specific art budgets. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number eight.
Anything else, otherwise I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move approval of the consent agenda items 4A through G and 5 through 7.
Second.
Okay, first and second, questions or comments on the rest? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Downing, you pulled number eight.
Resolution approving revisions to the percent for art policy and adopting project-specific art budgets. Majority of this I can agree with, but there's one part of it I need a little bit of clarification for, I don't know if I completely agree with. We've been having a million for our cap on the tids we pull from. By sliding that to 2 million, wouldn't that be less artwork in our parks and other areas? My question's for our city administrator.
The current, it's projects greater than or equal to 100,000, this is putting a floor on projects that can consider a minimum of $2 million. So any projects between 100,000 and 2 million would not automatically have any art, public art as part of it.
So would you, would you call this a reduction in public art then?
No, because we've not been approving projects in that 100,000 to $2 million range for art. So the projects that have been funded so far have been projects in excess of 2 million. It's a reduction in the possibility of art, but not in the practical application of what the policy has been, if that makes sense.
I value the opportunity of having art in our parks. We've had, seen some of our art in Glen Park and I think if we slide it to 2 million, we might not see art like that. Is that true?
If you don't do, you know, if you did a $100,000 or $200,000 park shelter, you, you wouldn't see, under this policy, we wouldn't consider doing public art as part of that until we got to a $2 million project.
Okay, well, I'm curious.
It's a policy decision of the council, that's a number that, we looked at the history of what you've been funding and tried to pick a number that looked similar to what you've been funding, but the council has ultimate authority to set that number at whatever you'd like.
I would like to continue the way we have been doing it since we've been responsible with it, if that's okay with the rest of the council.
You make an amendment? Go ahead. Well, first, you want to make an amendment to this resolution?
I make an amendment to continue our traditional funding usage of it so we can continue doing projects like we've seen in Glen Park.
Mr. Mayor, can you get a motion on the floor first to amend?
He's making the mo, oh, yeah, let's make, so first give me a motion to accept the resolution approving the revisions to the percent.
I will move, I will move to approve the resolution, approving revisions to the percent for our policy.
Second.
Okay, so we got first and second, then we've had, we're having discussion and Mr. Downing, you want to make an amendment?
I'd like an amendment to keep the traditional funding levels where they're at, but encourage the speculation and the careful decision-making that we've been doing so we have the opportunities when they arise, if the council can agree on it responsibly. And I think we've done a good job. I'd like to know if someone would like to offer like a friendly amendment to what I'm suggesting.
So you make, you made an amendment, so we need a second on the amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, got a second on the amendment. Oh, yep, go ahead, okay.
I understand your position, but one of the things that I value about some of the art projects that we've funded, for instance, the, the structure in Glen Park, the metal sculpture at the electrical substation, is that they've got, there's some bang for their buck there. I mean, they're, they're significant and I just fear that if we, if we start funding a little bit for everything, it's gonna be diluted and those, the art things that end up getting funded will, you know, not have as big an impact is, is my thought.
I mean, I think we've been really careful about how we use that, though. People really enjoyed what we've already done. I've been on the committee the last two years, pointed there. We have a very good group of people who've worked for CAB in the community, who've been careful in what the recommendations are. So I like the new structures, everything else and we have, we have in this is very well-thought-out, but I do see that there's room to keep more of what we like and not lose some of the opportunity. I can understand personally why they'd be cautious about it, but I don't think we've been reckless with it and I think the community enjoys what we've done. So please support my amendment.
I've got to disconnect a little bit here because we haven't really been doing projects between 100 and 2 million. We still have the funds that we're gonna have. Do I understand that right, staff? I mean, if we're do, if we're not doing those projects anyway.
If you don't raise the threshold, then you'll just end up, you'll require more administrative review of all capital projects over 100,000. And then I am unlikely to recommend that you do art for those, but you, we'd have to come up with a way to get those in front of you because currently it just allows the administrator to say, basically, I looked at it and we're not gonna do it. The revision says that the budget comes to the council. I'm proposing that you affirmatively say, you want this project funded at this amount and I'm suggesting that staff was only gonna look at capital projects over 2 million to bring forward. So if, if the amendment passes, we would have to do some kind of review, which we can do, that's up to the council, to bring you all of those others. So if you approve the capital plan, then I'll go through the capital plan and say, is this, you know, do we want to do public art with our new police or fire engine? Probably not. Do we want to do public art with a $250,000 shelter? Probably not, but I'm gonna bring it forward to the council to look at. So the intent of the new policy was to just kind of focus, similar to what Councilmember Odean is talking about, just similar, focus on a few big projects.
And I, and I agree with, with, with Ms. Odean, I think, I think the bang for the buck is there and I still don't think we're losing anything here, we're just streamlining the process, is my understanding.
If you don't approve the amendment, you're losing the ability to review public art for projects under 2 million because you're telling me you don't want to look, as a council, you're telling me you don't want to look at those. If you approve the amendment, there's gonna be a gray area which we can work through between 100,000 and 2 million.
I think it's important to point out that our administrator will be working as the head of that ad hoc committee and that we can trust him to work with them and keep the scope that we've been doing. So that's why I'm not afraid to make an amendment like that, which makes sense to me.
Hey, does anybody else have anything on the amendment or the original for questions or comments? Okay, first, we'll, we'll take a vote on the amendments to put it back to funding any projects 100,000 or more and I will, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Amy, were you able to get that or do you want a roll call?
I believe I got the two ayes.
Okay, all against it?
No.
Okay, all in favor of the original resolution?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess I'm, I'm a no on that.
On the original?
On, on the, on the original, just to be clear, because I wanted it to include what I wanted. So just, can I put that in as a clarification when I'm explaining?
And Mayor, can I, point of information, can I clarify that the council intended to vote for the two budgets that were included in the memo, Fire Station and wastewater?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, next move on to ordinance resolutions. First one is a resolution approving Plan Unit Development, General Development Plan for Man Valley Residential and we're gonna have a little presentation by Assistant Director of Community Development, she's already up here, Emily Shively.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Shively, Assistant Director of Community Development. I also want to recognize Harley Melhorn, Senior Planner, and Carrie Schreiner, Economic Development Manager, for their contributions to this presentation. The items before you now are the Planned Unit Development, General Development Plan for the Man Valley Residential Project, along with a purchase agreement with Valley View RF LLC for two acres of land in the new neighborhood for the development of income-based housing. You will be asked to act on two separate resolutions, one for each of those items, the development project as a whole and then the purchase agreement for a portion of land in the development. To begin, the proposed Man Valley Residential Neighborhood is located west of De Sanctus Park on County Highway M and Discovery Drive. By way of some background, the location is within the Man Valley Corporate Park Master Plan, which is shown here. As seen on the graphic, the new neighborhood is located on Lot 4, which has been planned for multifamily, high-density residential. The site is zoned R3, Multiple Family High Density Residence District and guided for high-density residential development at a density of 12 dwelling units per acre or greater in the comprehensive plan. In creating the master plan, the city recognized that there was an opportunity to set aside a portion of the land for high-density residential housing to meet the significant need for multifamily housing as identified in the city's housing needs analysis. This type of housing would also efficiently utilize the extension of water, sewer and roadways consistent with the goals of the city's comprehensive plan. The master plan includes approximately 35 acres of stormwater and open space to the north and east of the multifamily area and approximately 63 acres of preserved natural area on the mound at the northeast corner of the site. Proximity to this open space provides an excellent location for high-density multifamily housing, giving residents access to parks and natural resource amenities. The city is also in the planning stages for an enhanced crossing of West Division Street between Bob White Street and De Sanctus Park that will safely connect the parks and neighborhoods in the area. As the city plans for westward growth and development, multi-purpose trail connections are an important part of connectivity and implementation of the city's bicycle and pedestrian plan. Future trails are planned and will be implemented as development progresses and funding is available. In fall 2024, the city held a ribbon-cutting to celebrate the completion of public infrastructure, including approximately two miles of paved trails that run all the way along the edge and back to Powell Avenue, all the way through the Man Valley Corporate Park. Approximately one-third of a mile of natural surface trails have since been added through the conservation area to connect to De Sanctus Park. In September 2023, the city of River Falls released the Man Valley Housing RFP for the approximately 10 acres in the corporate park. Included in the RFP was information from the River Falls Housing Needs Analysis and the need and importance of affordable housing in River Falls was emphasized. 360 Real Estate Solutions was the only developer to submit a response to the RFP. 360 Real Estate Solutions has partnered with Senear Solutions to provide proposed affordable housing within the larger housing site development, which also includes market-rate housing. In 2024 and then again in 2025, Senear Solutions applied for several competitive and non-competitive tax credit programs. In total, the project has been awarded approximately $890,000 from the State of Wisconsin Home Fund and approximately $10.7 million from the WIDA 9% Housing Tax Credit Program. Senear Solutions is waiting to hear if they were also awarded a $2 million grant from the Fed Home Loan Bank of Chicago through their affordable housing program. The proposed subdivision for the Man Valley Residential Neighborhood creates four lots for 255 units of multifamily housing in seven buildings throughout the site. The project includes a The project includes a mix of multifamily housing types, including multifamily apartments, rental townhomes, studio apartments above a community center, and a 50-unit building with income-based housing by Senair. Zooming in on the amenities, and note, north is to the right here. The new neighborhood will include a community center, a sport court, community gardens, a dog park, and outdoor amenity spaces located adjacent to all of the different projects. In addition to open space and stormwater areas, these kind of shaded in gray are the stormwater areas. The developer would also like to add more trail connections, kind of as conceptually shown here, to the conservation area and through it to the east in partnership with the city. Again, in designating the area for high-density residential housing in the master plan, the city recognized that the location right next to the 35-acre conservation and open space area and within a half a mile of De Sanctus Regional Park, which is the distance recommended in the outdoor recreation plan, provides excellent recreational amenities for future residents. That, along with the private open space amenities, is anticipated to meet the recreational needs of the new neighborhood without requiring additional land within the 10-acre parcel for public parks. As noted earlier, there are paved and natural surface trails that connect the new neighborhood to Powell Avenue and De Sanctus Park. The city has also been exploring options for bridging the Dry Run Creek to provide a more year-round accessible connection to De Sanctus Park and the two-mile paved trail in Man Valley. The site has been designed cohesively to allow for safe circulation between the buildings on Lots 2, 3, and 4. The community center will be available for all of the residents of the new neighborhood and includes a reservable gathering area, eight reservable working spaces, a fitness center, leasing office, and outdoor amenity areas. Similarly, the community gardens, dog park, sport court, and other outdoor amenities will be available to all of the residents in the new neighborhood. Surface parking is available for all of the housing with the addition of underground parking in the 72-unit buildings and garages for the townhomes. The proposed architecture features a unified style with some variation based on housing typology. The buildings range from two-story to four-story but keep similar materiality and massing. The proposed architecture is of a high level of quality, providing material variety, ornamentation, and a strong unifying theme amongst all the proposed buildings. The proposed new neighborhood is seeking flexibility with regard to three elements of the underlying R3 district, those being a setback from 25 feet to 10 feet for the eastern building line on Lot 4. This abuts a city outlot, which is used for a sanitary sewer lift station and underground utilities that then run to the east. They are also asking for a change in the parking ratio from two stalls per unit to approximately 1.5 stalls per unit in order to minimize impervious coverage and provide sufficient and efficient parking on the site. And finally, flexibility for private open space to meet the goals of the comprehensive plan for efficient use of infrastructure and in recognition of the unique location of this development adjacent to existing parks and open space. The city considers these requests for flexibility through a tool known as Planned Unit Development in the ordinance. According to the ordinance, a Planned Unit Development is a special use intended to encourage and promote improved environmental design by allowing for greater freedom, imagination, and flexibility in the development of land while assuring substantial compliance to the basic intent of the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. Such developments are intended to be enhanced by coordinated site planning and mixing of compatible uses. Such developments are also intended to provide a safe and efficient system for pedestrian and vehicular circulation, to provide attractive recreation and open spaces as an integral part of the development, and to enable efficient design in the location of public and private utilities and community facilities. And then finally, to ensure adequate standards of construction and planning. Flexibility granted to developers through the use of this tool shall be repaid through the provision of enhanced design or other such benefit that may be derived by both the developer and the community. The PUD, or Planning Unit Development, is constituted of two pieces, the General Development Plan, or GDP, which establishes basic use rights, and the flexibility, and the Specific Implementation Plan, or SIP, which is the specific implementation of the intent of the GDP via detailed engineering plans. Similar flexibility regarding parking setbacks and particularly open space has been requested and granted via PUD for these 11 multifamily projects in the city in just the past six years. In each of these, the determination was made that the project met the goals of the community, the general intent of the ordinances, and was in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Flexibility has also been granted specifically to meet the housing needs in the community. The city has been tracking progress towards meeting housing needs identified in the 2018 and 2022 housing studies. An additional 313 multifamily for rent units are needed by 2030. Further, 693 senior housing units are needed, and some of these may be provided in the housing proposed in the new neighborhood. The 255 units proposed in this neighborhood will likely be built in phases, starting with the income-based housing, and then the community center and studio apartments and one 72-unit building. The second 72-unit apartment building and the townhomes would follow. So basically doing the development from the south part of the site to the north. It takes time for housing to go from the plan stage to be ready to move in. When considering an application for a Planned Unit Development, city code requires the proposal to meet certain criteria, those being community benefit, character and intensity of land use, economic impacts, engineering and design standards, preservation and maintenance of open space, and consistency with the comp plan and official map. Staff has reviewed the proposal and found it to be consistent with the criteria. We've provided detailed analysis of each of these that can be found in the staff memorandum. Staff has also worked with the developer to ensure that the goals in the Focus River Falls plans, that being the comprehensive plan, outdoor recreation plan, and bicycle and pedestrian plan, are met to provide community recreation amenities for new neighborhoods. Given the high-quality amenities provided in the development, the connection to the Man Valley Trail System, the immediate adjacency to the conservation area, and the proximity of De Sanctus Regional Park to the east, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommended the collection of cash and lieu of land for park dedication in the amount of $198,900 would be appropriate for the subdivision. So the city has negotiated the purchase of approximately the two-acre parcel in the Man Valley Corporate Park housing area with Senair Solutions doing business as Valley View RF LLC to build the 50 units of affordable housing. The mix of units will include 28 one-bedroom, 12 two-bedrooms, and 10 three-bedroom units. It's proposed that 11 of the units will be available at 30% of area median income. 21 units will be available at 50% AMI, area median income. 12 units at 70% AMI, and 6 will be available at 80% AMI. The agreement contains development restrictions that require the use of the property for affordable housing for a period of 30 years. The property is located in Tax Increment District 19, which was created in 2023 and is scheduled to close in 2042. This approximately two-acre lot is valued at $147,060. Nearly one year ago, at the November 26, 2024 council meeting, the city council approved the sale of the property for $1 if Senair Solutions received the competitive tax credits for the project. The developer has received the tax credits for the project to move forward and has agreed to purchase the lot for $1. Closing for the property is scheduled for June 30, 2026, or such earlier date as mutually agreed by both parties. In summary, the proposed development consists of seven buildings with a total of 255 residential units. The applicant is requesting flexibility as part of the PUD process, including the eastern setback of the building on Lot 4, parking better tied to the expected number of residents, and open space in recognition of the proximity to public parks and open spaces. In exchange for this flexibility, high-quality development is being proposed with enhanced architecture, pedestrian connectivity, affordable housing elements, and appropriate density as contemplated by the comprehensive plan. Due to the high-quality recreation and open space amenities provided in the development, connection to the Man Valley Trail System, the conservation area, and De Sanctus Park to the east, the collection of cash and lieu of parkland would be appropriate for the subdivision. The agreement to purchase, or the purchase agreement for sale of a portion of the land to Senair will provide for much-needed affordable housing in alignment with the housing needs analysis and the goals of housing affordability and accessibility in the comprehensive plan. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mayor.
So first, I'll take a motion on number nine, which is a resolution approving the Plan Unit Development, General Development Plan for Man Valley Residential. I'll take a motion on this.
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, first and second. Question for Emily, or question here?
I have just a procedural question for you. What we have in front of us is the General Development Plan. There's a specific implementation plan. What's the timeline for that? Does that come back to you?
Thank you. So the process moving forward would be again a phased development of the project, and we anticipate that the Senair project will likely go first. And so they would come back with a detailed development plan for their portion of the site. And specific implementation plans are reviewed by Plan Commission and then given final approval by council. And what we look for at that time is what we call substantial conformance with those detailed plans and the General Development Plan that's before you this evening. And so if it's in substantial conformance, you've already set the policy direction at General Development Plan. And then we're just ensuring that they're following through with that when they do their detailed engineering. We anticipate that the Senair project may come sometime at the end of this year, beginning of next year, and then the other phases would follow.
Emily, so to go on with what Councilmember Odean said, what do you anticipate the timeline would be for the last phases of those townhouses to the north? Are we talking a year, two, three? How many? What are we talking? And I know it's only a guesstimate.
Yep. In terms of the other parts of the project that 360 would be doing, which is the community center and studio apartments, the 272-unit apartment buildings, and then the townhomes, it could be in the next year or the next two or three years, exactly as you said. So what they look at is sort of market feasibility and financial feasibility as they move ahead with development. But they are anticipating that the community center and studio apartments, to get those amenities in right away, and then one of the 72-unit buildings would be the first phase of their development.
Emily, I've got some comments as well, but just I want to reiterate, can you go back and talk about the AMI requirements and for the length? Because I've had comments from people that say, oh, as soon as they build it, they're going to take that out, and it's not going to be affordable anymore. We address it right there, right? Maintain affordability for 30 years.
Correct.
Okay. I've got other comments, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
None for Emily. Okay, so we've heard from a lot of the neighbors in the town of River Falls or Clifton. A lot of their concerns were over open space. I think we've demonstrated with this project, there's a 35.44-acre open space kind of to the, is that to the east? Is that the Dry Run? Okay, so we got space there. We've got the 62 acres on top of the hill. One of the concerns I had when I attended the Plan Commission meeting was about connectivity to De Sanctus, and we've got that addressed with a path. I talked with staff today, and there would be potentially room in the TIF if we needed to, and it sounds like we're talking about building a bridge, so I think we've tackled that one. A lot of misconceptions about the PUD and the fact that these are variances. These are not variances. These are things that we're overcoming by using the PUD. I think the, well, first of all, I'll talk about the setback for the 10 feet on that one building. It should be 25. We made an accommodation to go down to 10. We could have given them 15 more feet as well. That would have been an option because the city owns that lot next to them. So we could have accommodated that. I personally have got some concerns over our parking ordinance. I think it needs to be reviewed and redone. I think it makes sense for us to consider not requiring two parking spots per every unit, no matter how many bedrooms it is. It doesn't make any sense. If you've got a studio, I think we've assigned one. If you've got a one-bedroom, it's one and a half, two for two-bedroom and up. That's the methodology that was used for the parking here, and I agree with that methodology. I think that needs to be codified, and I'd ask staff to move that up the list. I know we ask a lot of the staff, but I'd ask you to move that up the list to get that done. And then the open space, again, I think is addressed by the 35 acres and the 62 acres. There's some concerns about the environmental impact in this. We've got the Dry Run there. We've got a lot of stormwater. We do not take lightly environmental impacts of things. We are more strict than our neighbors even to the north in Hudson when it comes to our environmental stuff. Finally, I think the other thing that I consider is the recommendations from other committees that come to us. PLAN took no action on it, which I was a little disappointed in, but they took no action on it. But PARK did approve it with their requirements. It's important as a council that we consider those recommendations to the council and listen to those recommendations. So for that reason, I think we've addressed quite a few things that were brought up tonight, and I'm in favor of this moving forward.
I'd like to go on further. Councilmember Morris said about the green space, too. Something that we really sell short on this is the two-plus miles of walking path. Linda Foster shared that, you know, even though they're in the township, they're using the city walkways. Mark Anderson, too, mentioned that he believes that it'll be a good pathway across there with theirs. So I think there's a lot of things that are already positive with it. Of course, nobody likes something going up in their backyard, but this is a good positive step, and I'll be going forward with it as well.
Anybody else have anything?
I can go ahead.
Yep, go ahead.
Or do you want to go? So I guess this is time where we're making some general comments in regards to what's before us. This isn't easy. I think some of you mentioned how, you know, we went to school with you, we worship with you, our kids know each other. There's nothing easy about this. What's important for people to hear is cities that do not grow die. The vibrant community you live in does not exist without increased citizens. We have to have mechanisms to grow as a city. And it would be easy to be cowed by this crowd. It would be easy to just walk away and say, let's punt it. But we've built a process that's been pretty open. It's been pretty fair. Your lack of awareness of a meeting does not mean the meeting did not happen. And so this was a 2023 RFP. And I'm struck by how the very thing that we're at is a thing that some feel is the cover of night. We're in a public meeting. We're in this format. We're in this setting. I think the part that has been addressed, and I echo what Councilmember Morris said, was looking at what some would call the variances, looking at some of the differences, the distinguishing features, looking at two down to 1.5 for parking, things like that. There is nothing easy about maintaining a good city, and there is nothing easy about growing a good city. We have a really good city staff. We have a very good fire department. We have a very good head of police. We have a very good city administrator. I think if you tend to agree with that statement, then you should also assume that we're not doing anything that is rash or foolish. And I'm going to speak about personal experience here. So where I live, 433 East Johnson, since I've been in that area, the university has redeveloped all around my backyard with, update, with funding out of Madison. We put in 92... We put in 92 units where the municipal airport used to be, right by Hockey. We put in another 50 units over at 1300, the ill-fated motel, for those of you in the know. I haven't seen any change in my neighborhood. It's not bad. I don't have to wait a light longer. I'm not waiting at stop signs longer. I'm not seeing bad people. Sometimes I see different people, but not necessarily bad. And so I think it's important we take all this in the context. The hardest thing about living in a city is this piece of sharedness. We share things together. It's how the structure works. Some of you who do not live in the city don't have quite that same level of sharedness. You get the benefits from being close, but you're not quite incorporated into the city. It is different. But I think this is a responsible project. If this were going by in my neighborhood, I would be in support of it. I'm in support of it now. I'll last end with a quote. It's from Edmund Burke. I think it's helpful. "Your representative owes you not his industry only, but his judgment. He betrays you instead of serving you if he sacrifices it surely to only your opinion." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. I appreciate your comments. I just wanted to make a kind of institutional memory point here that I've been on the council, I think, as long as anyone except for probably Councilmember Morissette and the mayor, and so have been here through the decisions to purchase property in Man Valley to develop it as an industrial park, as our other industrial parks were filling up, and also through the point where we were doing the housing studies. And also, the various ways that staff and the council have taken into consideration how we can provide housing that's more affordable. There are things that are outside of our power, but we do what we can. Sometimes that means slightly smaller houses. Sometimes that means a variance here or there, and sometimes that means, you know, acknowledging that our economy is different, and a lot of people live in apartment buildings for one reason or another because largely it's more affordable. Also, high density is better for our environment, is better, it's easier for our infrastructure. It keeps the cost down for our ratepayers. It is a lower footprint for the environment and for resources that we treasure, like the Kinnick-Kinnick. So, and this has been part of the Man Valley project for, I'm not sure it's been an entire decade, but it's been a long time. This has been something that we've planned for, and I am delighted that it has an affordable housing component in it.
Mr. Mayor?
It's very easy for council members to potentially agree with the city staff because they've gone to school, they've got the master's degrees, they can give you advice. I've taken it upon myself to take over 30 classes in housing, affordable housing. And I can tell you, the comprehensive plan applies widely, you know, when you look at a location like this. But there are other housing elements that we also can consider. That's part of why you're not seeing a recommendation from the Plan Commission. Thinking is hard. It's not something that's done for you. You just have to do it for yourself. So for me, when I look at something like this, you know, is it the worst plan? No. But have we considered other alternatives? I don't believe we have. For me, I'd like to see instead, in this location, that we focus on multiplexes here as it will create better and more rental opportunities, which would really, and should be the goal of this area. By focusing on these multiplexes, the city will have more overall say and control of the total project. Multiplexes are known as the missing middle housing because by providing gentle density that they can be more community-integrated than large apartment buildings. So gentle density is something that is worth discussing for a Plan Commission. Affordability, the smaller sizes can lead to lower per-unit construction, making them more affordable than single-family homes if done right. People in all communities welcome this. It's well thought out and has a clear goal. The single-studio apartments in this current plan here lose the rental return and return value on the lot for, in comparison to the people who need housing, who rent here, like myself. By having multiple housing tools that are not, they're not all focused on the best overall return for rentals, it instead focuses on maximization of density, but lacks the clear end goal of missing middle-income housing when you prioritize different aspects, three or four different elements, some which get traded in value for other pieces that don't measure up as well as other plans. There is good and bad with a plan in front of us today. The trade-off is, it loses overall potential of one clear objective goal. Since high density tries to do too much differently, it loses a community element and integration for more range and better rental opportunities for multiplexes such as duplexes, triplexes, fourplex, et cetera. By focusing on multiplexes there, we open up more desirable rental opportunities and tangible results that could provide the city with long-term rental opportunities. With a more measured approach, the city can get behind, since its focusing on the problem of lack of rentals is a target goal and not just having more expensive studio apartments with trade-offs. This approach would allow the development to be right-sized with one clear objective and return, which we all call smart growth as a community. The growth has to include us. Smart growth can be lost, in my opinion, when you get into real trade-value and high-density projects. It's true, we all have an all-out housing approach. That does not mean we should let whatever floats our way become a strategy of the day since we live with the consequences as a community. We should focus on multiplex rentals in this location and leveraging them as one solid project. By doing so, we don't lose the actual value of our goals in rentals and really just focus on what the community wants and needs in the immediate. If we want to maximize land efficiency, which is the goal of high-density, understand that locations would be better off in a different part of the city, such as where you are, when you're going directly towards Hudson, as the trade-off over there would be the convenience. They would pay more for the convenience of being closer and getting on and off the cities. That is the price of convenience. We shouldn't be baking the price of convenience into a strategy in Man Valley. Instead, we should be more deliberate in our planning. Get a strong multiplex strategy, which will open up the rental opportunities we need. I don't think we should be swapping for maximization of density in this particular location because the opportunity loss could be put into other housing elements I think the community wants first, which really should be the priority there. This would be a good chunk of the missing middle housing we need. Because if we just focus on more buildings and an all-out strategy, it will push the demand for rentals again higher in the long run, since it does not strictly focus on the people currently living here who need that specific missing housing element. By using smart growth strategy, we can also bring property taxes down correctly. Density will lose your property tax values when it comes to your schools. It doesn't mean we shouldn't do high-density. It just means we need to balance it in different locations and actually look at the character and the actual target goal of the housing element in the given location. So I'm not entirely against this plan. I just don't like where it is. And I think we really need to look at the rental aspect and strongly go after it with a multiplex strategy in this location. So I'll be voting against this.
I call a meeting order. Thank you, Sean. Anybody else have anything? Okay?
I have one more question.
Yep.
Mr. Simpson, could you tell us about the bidding process? Were there any other groups that wanted to do this project that felt that they really needed to do it, that they would bid against these guys for a project like this?
As was stated in the presentation there, we received one full response for the RFP.
One simple, full response? That's kind of a lonely response. You know, they warn cities why using TIDS to fund projects, when it comes to fairness and whatnot? Because if there's not a competitive bid, what happens is the money goes into parts of projects that don't have the actual return to the city, where you could maximize your actual growth and plans. That's a really good reason to vote against this, as well as what I said.
Yeah. Staff would not forward a presentation if we didn't think it met the requirements and the goals that you put in front of us as staff. Whether we had one or 10, we could have rejected all 10 if we didn't feel that they met the requirements. And ultimately, that's a decision that the council gets to make. And we brought the one that we had forward because we felt it met the requirements that you put in place in front of us.
And it's true, cities can make exceptions to anything. But remember, anytime you make an exception, you're opening the door for something you probably aren't fully aware of what's coming into it. Unless you truly know what you're getting into the agreement in, in the long term, it might actually work against you.
No, no, done. You guys had your chance. Thank you. Anybody else have anything on this one?
Do not.
Okay. So this is just for Number Nine, Resolution Approving the Plan Unit Development, General Development Plan for Man Valley Residential. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, next one is the Resolution Approving the Purchase Agreement with Valley View RF LLC. And I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the purchase agreement with Valley View RF LLC.
Second.
First and a second on this. Questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, next we move on to a Resolution Approving the Plan Unit Development, General Development Plan for Wildflower Meadows. And again, our Assistant Director of Community Development, Emily, will give us a presentation on this.
Thank you. Once again, I'm Emily Shively, Assistant Director of Community Development. And again, I'd like to recognize Harley Melhorn, our senior planner, for his contributions to this presentation. The next item before you tonight is Wildflower Meadows with a request for a general development plan and preliminary plat approval for a 93-unit, single- and two-family subdivision. As I mentioned in the last presentation, the GDP, General Development Plan, is the first step in the PUD process that establishes the basic right-of-use and conceptual site design for a project, and if approved, development is subject to a specific implementation plan substantial conformance with the general development plan. The proposed new neighborhood is located on the north side of Powell Avenue at North Winter Street, northwest of Collins Park. And JP B. Land and JP Brooks Builders is proposing this new neighborhood. The preliminary plat for Wildflower Meadows is shown on the left and would create 61 single-family lots and 32 twin-home lots and three outlots for parks, open space, and stormwater. The Wildflower Meadows neighborhood plan is shown on the right. Single-family home building pad areas, not actual buildings, are shown in pink, and the twin-home, let's see, so, pink, kind of around the edge and around here. And then the twin-home building pad areas are shown in purple. This diagram also shows sidewalks on both sides of all of the new streets, along with boulevard trees that are shown as these green dots. Public park and trail areas are proposed on Outlots One and Three. And then enhanced crossings of Powell Avenue will occur at both entrances of Meadow Suite Drive to connect the existing paved trail south of Powell Avenue. This diagram shows the different lot sizes proposed in the neighborhood, with, again, the yellow lots that are shown here having a minimum 60-foot lot width, and the light orange lots, shown on the interior here, as having a minimum 50-foot lot width. Areas where a building may be located are shown as the orange rectangles. The 60-foot lots have a 50-foot wide building pad, and the 50-foot wide lots have a 40-foot wide building pad. The red line, shown here, indicates the extent of the first phase of the development on the south end of the site, which would include 44 homes. And those would start construction in 2026. And then the 49 homes in the second phase would likely begin construction in 2027 or As we heard this evening, there are existing local drainage patterns that encumber much of the eastern portion of the property, where off-site stormwater needs to be conveyed through the site. In order to accommodate that existing drainage, there is a large easement that runs along the north and east side of the site to convey stormwater through that area. And in the area where the drainage easement is, it significantly increases the lot sizes. The proposed architecture features a unified style with the use of high-quality finishing materials and architectural embellishments. There are numerous variations on the chosen vernacular, keeping a strong identity while crafting various elevations to prevent visual monotony. The 60-foot wide lots can accommodate a three-car garage, and the 50-foot lots would have a two-car garage. The twin homes would have two car garages for each unit. The developer is proposing to dedicate parkland in the new neighborhood to the city for new city park spaces in the northwest corner of the development and the south-central area on the future Astro Avenue, adjacent to the stormwater and open space area. The stormwater areas and the new streets would also be dedicated to the city in the plat. So the image here depicts a 17,209-square-foot park with a 12-foot wide paved trail in the northwest corner of the neighborhood, connecting to the Woodridge neighborhood, a 6,964-square-foot park with a playground, 10-foot paved trail, and picnic area in the lower third of the neighborhood. And this is similar to the amenities in Brandon's Park. 118,955 square feet of area is set aside for stormwater and open space north of Powell Avenue. And then, as I mentioned, an enhanced crosswalk between Meadow Suite Drive and North Winter Street across Powell Avenue will connect with the trail to Collins Park and the sidewalk on North Winter Street. The large central stormwater area will be graded to provide a level space around the perimeter where the city can maintain a mown pathway for walking, similar to the Sterling Ponds neighborhood, or potentially install a paved trail to connect the park with Meadow Suite Drive and Powell Avenue at some point in the future. And I'd also like to note that the majority of the 50-foot lots back onto public park and open space areas. In working with the developer, the Conservation and Parks Manager identified the type of park amenities that would be appropriate for this development. The amenities at Collins Park, right across the street, were considered, and as they are designed for an older age group, playground equipment that is suitable for a younger age group was recommended by the Conservation and Parks Manager for this park, as shown on this slide. To meet the goals of the Outdoor Recreation Plan, ADA accessible pathways and surfacing underplay equipment are proposed. The park would also include a concrete pad and picnic table, garbage can, bench, and dog bag dispenser, in order to provide the essential elements that the park board has determined after the assessment of the Outdoor Recreation Plan, as should be provided in all city parks. Additionally, the Conservation and Parks Manager and the Public Works Manager considered the size of the public park dedication and the proposed equipment and amenities in light of the overall park system needs and ongoing maintenance requirements. While the Outdoor Recreation Plan inventory shows that River Falls currently significantly exceeds the recommended amount of open space and parkland per capita, well beyond population projections past 2040, providing these features and spaces in the new neighborhood will fill a gap in the type of play equipment offered in the city and will not add unduly to park maintenance responsibilities. This table summarizes the proposed public parks, stormwater and open space, and pedestrian connections to be provided in the new neighborhood. In order to provide park amenities for the new residents right away, the developer is proposing to apply the remaining park dedication fees to construct the trail connection in the northwest park and the playground, trail, and picnic areas in the south-central park area in the first phase of the development, which, again, is that south area, including the homes north. which again is that south area, including the homes north of Astor Avenue. This table outlines the total proposed parkland dedication, cash in lieu of land, and the portion of park impact fees that would be used to install the amenities at the time of development, with the remainder to be collected with each building permit when it's submitted for the homes in the development. When it comes to park dedication for a new subdivision, one may ask, what does the community need and how much is enough? According to the Outdoor Recreation Quantitative Needs Assessment, the city currently exceeds the national standard of parkland and has more than enough neighborhood parkland to serve residents as the community grows. The proposed new neighborhood is also within the recommended quarter-mile walking distance from a neighborhood park, which is Collins Park, and the recommended half-mile walking distance from a regional park, which would be De Sanctus Park. The provision of parkland within the new neighborhood has not been identified as a need in the community. However, it does provide a community benefit to the nearby neighbors and may be recognized as a public benefit in exchange for the flexibility requested via P U D. And as a reminder, as we just discussed with the Man Valley Residential Neighborhood, a planned unit development is a tool in the ordinance used to provide flexibility in order to achieve improved design, meet the ordinance intent, and result in a project that better meets community goals as defined by the comprehensive plan. The proposed new neighborhood is seeking flexibility via this planning unit development tool with regard to four elements of the underlying R2 district. Those being single-family lot size and width in order to provide housing types that were identified in the comprehensive plan as needed and desired in the community. Measuring the single-family side yard setback from the foundation rather than the eve, which still ensures sufficient and safe separation of homes and efficient use of the lot area. And finally, the corner side setback on just two of the twin home lots due to roadway configuration. Regarding lot width, of the 22 lots that are less than 60 feet in width, only 10 are actually 50 feet wide. The others range between 51 and 58 feet in width. There are 18 lots that are exactly 60 feet in width. 21 lots are greater than 60 feet in width. For lot size, those with a minimum lot width of 60 feet average 10,464 square feet. These 39 lots exceed the minimum lot size requirement in the R2 zoning district. For lots with a minimum lot width of 50 feet, the average lot size is 7,173 square feet and range from 6,250 square feet to 8,856 square feet. The R2 district permits existing lots of record to have a minimum of 5,000 square feet. The request to measure the side yard setbacks from the foundation rather than a roof overhang is a minor difference and has been permitted in other housing developments in the city, most recently in the Oak Hill neighborhood, which is located on South Apollo Road. This measurement exceeds the minimum standard for fire separation in the state building code. For the twin home corner side yard setback, flexibility is being requested for two units on the north end of the neighborhood where Meadow Suite Drive curves. Those setbacks will be 11 feet to the front corner of the twin homes rather than 15 feet. All other corner side yard setbacks are met or exceeded. Similar flexibility regarding lot size, lot width, and setbacks has been requested and granted via the planned unit development tool for these other neighborhoods in the city. Notably, the Oak Hill neighborhood on South Apollo Road consists of all 60-foot single-family lots. And the Knollwood neighborhood, which is located east of the high school, has 82 50-foot lots. In each of these neighborhood developments, the determination was made that the project met the goals of the community, the general intent of the ordinances, and was in alignment with the comprehensive plan. And again, flexibility has been granted specifically to meet the housing needs in the community. As I noted earlier, the city has been tracking progress towards meeting the housing needs identified in the 2018 and 2022 housing studies. An additional 258 single-family and 81 twin-home units are needed by 2030. Further, those 693 senior housing units are needed and some of those for active seniors may be provided in the housing proposed in the new neighborhood. This year, in 2025, the St. Craig County Economic Development Corporation released a housing needs assessment. Some of the findings from the countywide survey include an overwhelming majority of respondents identifying smaller single-family homes as the type of housing most needed in their community. And nearly a quarter identified a desire to live in smaller homes in the next five years, such as those seeking to downsize. Strategies outlined in the report include identifying areas where new residential development may be built, particularly in areas where infrastructure is in place to support it, and encouraging development in infill areas. In assessing the projects against the criteria for planned unit development, staff made the following findings. Regarding community benefits, this project will provide housing units with project types identified as needed in the community. The development will also feature a small community park and enhanced crossings to connect with the existing paved trail leading to Collins Park. Further, the developer is also making fiscal contributions towards the future Powell Avenue corridor improvements. Regarding character, the subject site is zoned R2, multiple-family, medium density. The allowable uses in such district are residential in nature, such as apartments, townhomes, duplexes, two-family homes, and single-family homes. The principal use of a single- and two-family subdivision is permitted by right under the existing zoning. The proposed architecture is of a high level of quality, providing material variety, ornamentation, and a strong farmhouse ranch style that fits with the surrounding architectural vernacular. The proposed development is anticipated to be compatible with the surrounding land uses with similar neighborhoods established in other areas of the city. And a note about density. The comprehensive plan designates the future land use of the site as medium-density residential. And the current zoning is in line with that designation. While the medium-density designation encourages development at 6 to 12 dwelling units per acre, the proposed development is only 3.7 gross dwelling units per acre. However, it does provide for the most desired housing type in River Falls according to the community engagement in the comprehensive plan, those small lot, single-family homes. If developed at the allowed maximum density, the site could accommodate up to 298 dwelling units. Given the unique location of the property surrounded by existing single-family homes, it is appropriate to provide flexibility regarding the overall density of the development. The proposed development is economically feasible and will pay sewer and water connection fees along with park, fire, and library impact fees per the city's fee schedule. A detailed budget study was completed when the annexation of the property was considered that outlined the anticipated costs of the development along with the revenue generated via taxes and fees and concluded that the revenues would be sufficient to cover expenses associated with the development. The developer will be paying capital costs as outlined in the capital cost study that was adopted when this property was annexed to the city. Detailed engineering specifications will be provided in the specific implementation phase of the project, of the approval process, to ensure that the project meets engineering and design standards per the code. Preliminary staff review comments on the project have been acknowledged by the developer with modifications to the concept plan. Primary access to the development is provided off of a loop drive with two access points onto Powell Avenue. Secondary emergency access is provided via the 12-foot paved trail and it's designed to handle emergency vehicles at the northwest corner of the development to connect with West Woodridge Drive. This also provides connectivity for bicyclists and pedestrians between the two neighborhoods without adding regular vehicle traffic through a local street connection. Stormwater is maintained in the outlots, which will be dedicated to the city as part of the plating process and will meet Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and city stormwater management requirements. City stormwater ordinances are more stringent than the Wisconsin D N R in order to protect the special resource of the Kaniknik River and its tributaries. Off-site stormwater will be conveyed through the site via a large drainage easement on the north and east side of the neighborhood. This proposed subdivision includes a small public park internal to the development, which will feature an accessible play structure with accessible surfacing. A walking path may be maintained by the city around the large central stormwater ponding area. Sidewalks line both sides of the street, which lead to enhanced crossings and provide a connection to Collins Park on the south side of Powell Avenue. Through a combination of access to existing parks and trails and the dedication of developed public parkland inside the development, access to open space and recreational amenities is provided for the new neighborhood. As noted earlier, the comprehensive plan designates the future land use of the site as medium-density residential, which contemplates a range of residential uses and densities typically between 6 and 12 dwelling units an acre. The proposed neighborhood is in alignment with the comprehensive goals for connection, livability, access, resources, partnerships, and resiliency. I will not go into as much depth with regard to the preliminary plat as we've covered the features of the proposed neighborhood already. I'll simply note that the plat has been reviewed against the planning guidance and ordinances and the design of streets, blocks, and lots will be in conformance with the code if the P U D flexibility request is granted. In summary, the proposed development consists of a 93-unit neighborhood with 61 single-family and 32 twin homes on approximately 25 acres. Flexibility has been requested for lot size, lot width, and setbacks, which is consistent with previously approved P U Ds in the city. In exchange for this flexibility, a high-quality development is being proposed with enhanced architecture, pedestrian connectivity, and appropriate density as contemplated by the comprehensive plan. The proposed subdivision would provide two new areas of city parkland with developer-installed improvements in the park areas, two enhanced crossings of Powell Avenue, and the development is within a quarter mile of Collins Park and neighborhood park, which is the recommended distance. The new neighborhood would provide additional housing choices to meet the existing and anticipated demand in an integrated design with new local streets, sidewalks, stormwater management, and park amenities. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I was reading on it. Anyways. Okay, thanks, Emily. So first I will take a motion on the resolution approving the planned unit development, general development plan for Wildflower Meadows.
So moved.
Second.
First and second. Okay, questions, comments?
I have some comments. I have to go first or somebody else wants to? We need this develop, we need this type of housing in the city. There's no doubt about it. We do not, we've had a lot of multi-family apartment buildings that have gone up. We need this type of housing. Unfortunately, I can't support this. It's, I can't support the 50-foot lot lines. I was not on the council when Knollwood was put in and I'm basing my comments on the fact that I get calls from Knollwood about parking issues. And that really is what drives my, my decision on this. They, the, when you have 50-foot lot lines, you've got the two, uh, two-car driveway, that's somewhere around 20 feet. You've got 30 feet left, that's maybe a car or two anymore. You can't, you'd have parking on both sides. I'm concerned about children running out in the street and I'm concerned about all those different traffic, traffic concerns. We, I, I hope that if we don't pass this, the developer will come back with a different plan because we do need this type of housing in the city. And I, I, I really, truly hope that he hears that. I, I, I mentioned with the Man Valley one, I take, I put a lot of weight into the committees that also review this. Plan came back, not approved, and park came back, not approved.
No, park approved.
Not this one, not this one.
Oh, no, you're right, you're right.
So park didn't approve, plan didn't approve. I, I have to put some credence in, in the back, in the work that they did to look at this. So I, for the traffic reasons, for the lot size reasons, and the history I've got with other lots of this size, I just, I can't support this, so I'm going to be voting no.
Mr. Mayor?
Anybody else?
I just wanted to mention, if the council discussion can continue, but I failed to introduce Paul Tobone from J P B Land Development, who was going to come up and say a couple of words. So if he could do that now?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Tobone with J P B Land. We are the development arm for J P Brooks Builders based in Maple Grove, Minnesota. I just want to take a few minutes to talk through a little bit like who we are, what we do. And then I would be available to stand for questions, concerns. We'd really like to, we very much appreciate the ability to address the concerns. And I heard Councilor Morris said concerns as it is, so I do have a question, follow-up question about that. We're a local builder developer and all decisions are made locally from start to finish, meaning there's continuity from the front-end land planning through the home construction. What that means is that we're not developing the lots and selling them to another builder. We actually developed the lots, or the home sites specifically for J P Brooks Homes and J P Brooks product. Our mission is very simple and I wanted to, I hear comments about the missing middle and affordable housing. And affordable, I think, hits differently with different people depending on, you know, your audience. We're really good at providing the housing for the missing middle. We typically have homes that start in the mid, I'm sorry, the high twos, low threes, and do go up to like 650 depending on where you're, you're buying, but in the location in the marketplace. But we have been successful at delivering market-rate, attainable, affordable housing throughout the metro. And so that's the goal for this community and this proposal is before you this evening. We've built over 1,000 homes in 45-plus communities. We've been in business for 13 years. And average number of homes is about 150 every year. This year, we're trying to push that a little bit and maybe get as close to 200 as we can. We are in growth mode within the 13-county metro area. And we've been ranked as a top 25 builder in the Twin Cities as well. So that's just a little bit about, about who we are. I had a statement kind of prepared to speak through, but Emily did a really nice job, you know, walking us through everything that I pretty much was going to say. Hats off to Amy and Harley. Really appreciate the staff, the insight, the guidance, and the hard work that's, that's taken place to get to this, to this point. I also want to let you all know that I've been with J P Brooks like maybe five or six months, less than six months, actually. And this project has been in the works for probably close to two years. There's been a lot of conversations that have taken place, a lot of insight that's been provided, numerous emails, probably more than, than staff wants to, to admit. But a lot of phone calls, a lot of conferences, and we believe that it's a high-quality project that implements the goals of the housing study. We've, we've talked about what those are this evening, the comp plan and the zoning ordinance. The deviations on the P U D, we believe are minimal. I hear what you said, Councilor Morris said about the smaller lot sizes. My follow-up to you with that question would be what, you know, what would you be looking for? I hear that you're not, you don't like the 50-foot lots. I'm just kind of wondering if you can provide a little bit of, of background on that.
You know, I, I, I live in a neighborhood that was developed in the early 2000s. We have 90-foot lots. My neighbor couldn't backfill his back, when he built his house, he couldn't backfill his backyard because the setbacks were such that he had to come into my yard, do it. I was fine with it. But that's the concern I've got is that, is that the, the houses being that close together with a 50-foot setback, with a 50-foot front, and then you throw in the driveway that takes up 20 feet, I don't, whatever.
18, 16, 18, it's a curve.
Okay.
Sure.
So you've got a limited amount of parking. Holidays are coming up. People have birthdays. People get together for football games. I mean, there's, there's a bunch of stuff and you're parking on the streets. And parking on both sides of the streets, you're going to have a narrow passage. And there's a, there's a risk of, you know, I want to be safe, the kids want to be safe and everything else. So those are my main concerns, but I just can't, I can't get in, and I can't get behind a 50-foot set, or 50-foot frontage. There's been talk about, well, maybe we need to codify that. I wouldn't vote for that either, just in case everybody's wondering. So what's the lot size? You know, it depends. If, if you take 65 feet and you've got a pie-shaped lot and you put the house back farther so that there's more room between the houses, I might be able to get behind that. That might be something I would consider. That might be something I would consider. But, you know, if they're standard, you know, most neighborhoods, the houses kind of are all set back to the same distance for visual, you know, pleasing visual, and I, I can't, I can't get behind, 65 is even very narrow. But I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at the whole plan before I could give you an answer.
Understood. Is it okay if I ask you a question or two? I'm just, I'm trying to have this conversation to, to make sure that I go away with enough information.
That's up to the mayor, if he wants to. That's up to you. Okay. I'll, I'll try to answer him. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. I guess the, the question that I have, if, is, do you get a lot, maybe the mayor or other councilors can, can speak to this. Are there a lot of complaints from that neighborhood on, on parking and access issues?
I, I personally, I don't know if others have, but I personally had calls in Knoll, from residents in Knollwood for a couple of different reasons, and I understand the mailboxes that you are going to put are, are going to be centrally located, but we got calls from neighbors because they put their garbage out and people were parking on the streets and trucks couldn't get to the garbage, so they missed that. That topic's coming up later, but we won't dwell on that one, but they couldn't get mail. People parked across driveways and, and, and we've had to have law enforcement get involved. That's where, that's where I'm taking that. Now, Oak Hill, that one hasn't fully filled out yet, so we'll have to see how that one goes. I think the streets are maybe a little wider in Oak Hill, if I'm not mistaken, but I maybe am wrong, I don't remember. But that's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm pulling from my, my position, is, is the stuff I'm getting from, from Oak, uh, Oak, uh, from Knollwood.
So I guess the only, the only thing that I wanted to close with is that we believe it's a good proposal. I'd like to hear, answer any other questions or concerns, that's why I'm here this evening, from any of the other council members as well. And the schedule would be to start in May, or sorry, spring of 2026, and I just wanted to close by saying that we would appreciate your support this evening. As I said, there's a lot that's gone into this, and if there's anything, any other questions or concerns that you have, we, we'd like that, I'd like the ability to talk to those at all.
And just to, just to clarify one last point, I truly mean it. If, if this doesn't pass the council night, I sure, I really hope you'll come back. I, I like your designs, I like your, I like your product. I just don't like the layout, and I can't get behind that, but we need this in the city, and I, I hope if we don't pass this tonight, you come back. Go something else.
Relatively soon.
Relatively soon, it'll be fine.
The question that, and trying to understand the zoning component of it too, is with that density, we would look to potentially do something. If we have to lose, lose certain home sites, we'd look to make it up elsewhere on the site, meaning that we could actually come back with a more dense plan. And so if that's something the council wants to entertain, we can, we can look at that. I'm just, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I mean no disrespect, like I just, I'm trying to understand, you know, we're, I have this opportunity to speak with you all on this forum, so I just want to make sure that I go away with the proper information if we're going to go relook at something and come back.
I think myself, I'd like to be cautious about giving you direction like that, but I will tell you that I will give an honest reaction to whatever you put in front of us. And I don't know how the other council members think about that.
Having been a develop, developer and a builder, I've dealt with narrow lots like this, and it's, it's challenging but not impossible to do a very nice job on a narrow lot, and I appreciate what Mr. Morris said is saying. But I've also been on this council for almost eight years now, and I can't tell how many times people have come here and said, we want affordable, single-family housing, and we can't give it to them unless we give them the density. And I, I, I appreciate what everybody's saying, but unfortunately, you kind of have to, I mean, density and affordability are joined at the hip, like it or not, that's just the way it is. So to get this many single-family homes available in River Falls is, to me, is amazing. We've been waiting for this for, ever since I've been on council. So I'm, I'm all for it.
I'm with Alderman Beers said with this too. I don't like the small lots either, but I don't see any other choice on it but to do that. But one question I do have of you, if I could ask?
Sure.
Did you look at, and I'll use your lot eight, nine, and 10, did you look at maybe re, eliminating one of those and making the lot eight and nine larger so you could make, eliminate lot 10 so you could make that park that is, I, I hate to say it, but it's almost kind of an embarrassment, but just to make that a little bigger?
To answer your question, we did look at that, and that is something that we were having internal conversations on. Doing so would essentially result in, obviously, no, I mean, I'll just be honest, no developer ever wants to lose a lot, right?
Nope, I know.
I mean, I'm sure if you've been doing this a while, every developer that walks through that door wants to keep, you know, yield as, as high as we can, especially given the zoning situation, and we're not, we're not pushing up the max density the way that some developers would try to. We're trying to hit the market, and we're trying to hit it well.
Right.
We did look at that. It would essentially result in making lots eight and nine, both 60 feet wide, as you're stating, 50-foot product, three-car garages, and would, would, I don't have the exact numbers, but it would essentially double the size of the park if we did that. I think it would go to like 5,000, I have it written down, I had it written down, apologies, 5,900 feet to about 10,000 feet. So it would, it would roughly double it, and you'd be looking at about a quarter acre there.
Yep, right. So, so you did look at it?
We did look at it. We did look at it, and if, if, I mean, I would put this out there that since we're talking about it, if that's something that the council would like to see in a little bit of an expanded park space, and we can move forward with, you know, the support and work with staff through that process, we'd be open to doing that.
And that's why it didn't pass at the park board review was because of that small size, so I guess if I would, to make an amendment, if, if, if you guys would change that, I would propose that we accept it as if you eliminated 10 and made that a larger park, but I don't know if this is a place to do that, Mayor.
So I, you can, you have pretty wide latitude as a council to amend, change. I would suggest that the council work through their questions, debate all the things that you're doing with each other, and then we can, either you can provide, because you understand what your consensus is, you can provide that direction to staff to, to discuss with the developer, or if you, or if you know exactly what you want and there's consensus in the council, you're in an open meeting, you can, you could do that. I'd just be thoughtful about how effective you're going to be at, well, I want this, can we get that? You know, should we, because the council should be speaking as a whole about what you want in order to satisfy what, you have to make a determination this is a public good for a PUD. So that's your, your quintessential choice here is, do we want to go forward with this project as proposed? Is it in the interest of the public good to do so? If not, what things would you amend to get it to the finish line? And of course, the developer can say yes or no here. They can also say, well, let's talk about it. You can also approve a GDP and say fundamentally, this is what we want, but we have the following three concerns, or two concerns, or 10 concerns, before it comes back in SIP, this is what the council would expect to see in order to approve the, the SIP. You know, you're taking a little risk because the council, the, the developer can rely on an approval of the GDP to say, wait a second, you told me it was okay, and now you're saying it's not. I, I think the city attorney would agree with me that if, if when you approve the GDP, you say we're approving it on the condition that you go back with staff and work on these three things, the developer can't come back later and say, well, you didn't give me what I asked for in the SIP, and it at least narrows the funnel of what you're focused on in, in continued discussions. So you have, I think you have wide latitude to.
They can approve it as it is.
Modify it, send it back to plan or park, or send it to staff only, send it to just park and not plan.
Plan and just park.
Very broad latitude to do what council wants, but if you don't have a consensus, it may be better to, you know, propose some ideas to staff and have it come back before you again, so you've got a clean, clean GDP for approval. But if you want to, you could approve it with certain conditions. It gets messier.
I don't feel comfortable us redesigning this thing sitting up here. That's not fair, I don't think, so. I would say we either vote it up or down, and then if it goes down, then we can go back and talk with this, these folks, which is, I think, what you're suggesting.
Well, and you've got a motion and a second to approve it as it is. So you can decide you want to vote on that and see if it passes, or you can, people can offer amendments and you can go through an amendment process. That's up to the council.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
I like the idea of voting yes or no, and if you vote yes, making recommendations that staff works with JP Brooks on what to bring, how to bring it to us when we look at the SIP. Is that, would that work, Emily?
And so would, would it be possible to know kind of what those may be? And again, I'm not trying to interject.
Right. One, we know one right now is.
Sure.
You know, the next, the extra park.
Understood.
Or park.
Yeah. Yeah, the park expansion. Understood.
Going from 50 to 60s and.
And we can take a look at that.
Mr. Mayor? So I'm not in favor of the current deviations that were put in front of me today. I'd like to see it go back to the plan commission. I'd like it to consider what Councilmember Morris said talked about. The layout's a very important thing. I look at design elements like safety in that specific location. I can see why a design like that would come from the area you're from, and it makes sense that it does have certain things that are for this region. So I like the fact that you can curtail to an extent, but that area needs something that's more thoughtful in approach. So I think if it went to the plan commission, they'd be able to actually have a recommendation that we could possibly see in its entirety, because that's what we're lacking. We're not seeing the whole process where, the way cities are supposed to function in that respect. It needs to be vigorously tested by a plan commission before it comes to us.
Anybody else have anything?
I have just a generic comment about the housing stock in River Falls. I agree with my colleagues that this is, these small houses are a niche that isn't filled in River Falls and is needed, and I want to commend staff for doing what we've asked them to do over the last few years, find ways to adjust development plans to maybe, to bring the cost down where we can. I understand that our ordinances, our planning ordinances will probably come before us in the next couple of months with some revisions reflecting, you know, smaller, except as a smaller lot lines, the difference in parking requirements. But one of the lovely things I think about River Falls is how, what a variety we have. We have large houses like Mr. Morris's on large lots. We have, we have old, we have 100-year-old houses, like my own. We have older apartment buildings, we have newer apartment buildings that are going up, we have townhomes now, and now we're starting to, you know, develop our stock of high-quality rental apartment buildings. And I think that the, the proposed houses here fit nicely with that existing diversity of housing stock.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'll just add that I, I commend what, what staff has done, because this, so you build a plan and then you work a plan, right? And that's what they've done. I like a lot of this project. I, I think my main critique would just be not being able to get approval of those two other bodies. That's important and helpful. And so I think as long as we can find something that gets through both park and gets through planning commission, I'm sure we'd be supportive as a council, or at least I would be. But without those two bodies right now, I, I just can't vote yes.
Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to kind of add to what we've been saying too, you know, River Falls, we've experienced 4% growth, that's double than most communities, and we should be proud of ourselves for that. In this particular case though, I think it, the easy decision is to send it back to plan commission, take the oversight that we've kind of discussed as a group, and I think we'll find a healthy middle that we can agree on, so.
Mr. Mayor? I just want to clarify, and this is a legitimate question, Emily, I know I should have this memorized by now. This is going back to plan commission regardless, right? For, with the GDP/SIP process? If, if the GDP is approved, it goes to plan commission for SIP before it comes back to council. So I understand, I think what the council's saying is you want the GDP to go back to the plan commission, but I want you to understand that this is going to the plan, even if you were to prove it as it is, it's going to the plan commission. They're going to get another crack at whatever results in that SIP negotiations and discussions with staff. So I'm not, I'm not saying that's equivalent. That's not what I hear from the council. Those of you who want, Councilmember Downing, I, I understand you to say, send the GDP back to the plan commission for them to work on these issues. Then it would potentially come back to council, then back to plan commission, and then back to council. So there, there can either be four steps, or there can be two, but there's going to be at least the two steps left. Unless you voted against the G, unless you wanted to signal to staff that you're done, you don't want to talk about it anymore, then you would vote, you would vote against the GDP without basically any comments and say, you know, you have to do that. So we would, staff would understand either an approval, which is the motion you have, meaning it goes through to plan commission and then back to council, two more steps, or if you want to clarify through an amendment or something, we would, we would need to know that, that you want to send the GDP back.
If you wanted to restart the bidding process, would that be a no vote?
Restart the bidding process.
Like if we were to resubmit it through the plan commission, could we actually resolicit bids on it?
This is not, the city's not involved in an RFP. This is a privately-held property with a private developer.
Oh, never mind. I got, I done, just, just to be clear. So it would be the GDP process I would want then.
Okay. That's how I understood your comments.
Yes, thank you.
What I understand on the floor right now is just a plain vote for approving the GDP as submitted.
But what I heard was if we want to give direction between the GDP and the SIP, now is the time to give it.
Yes.
The staff and say.
You can do that.
Here are the things that I'm concerned about, and I, I want to see different. Mr. Bjork brought up the park, I brought up the lot sizes. I don't know if others have got input. I, I have, I have no problem with the 11-foot setbacks on the side of the twin homes, that doesn't bother me at all. That's fine. It's the 50-foot lot sizes that bother me. What's the minimum? I don't really know that I want to give you a number right now, and I know that's not fair, but something much more than 50. I think, I think we have to, I think we owe it to the developer, I think we owe it to staff, that if we're gonna put a stipulation and expect something out of the SIP, we better tell them what it is now.
So I would, I, I agree, and I respect that. It also would be helpful if co, if staff knew if there was just votes to approve it as it is. That doesn't mean staff is not going to try to please the council when we bring it back to you in SIP, but it also helps understand what the, we need to know what the floor and the ceiling of this discussion might be, and if you're doing kind of informal amendments and individual council members saying what they want, well, then we're probably going to end up pleasing nobody because we'll come back and, and have pieces of it, and you'll say, well, I want, I wanted 62-foot lots, I wanted 2.3 acres of park. So you do have a vote that could tell staff whether the submitted GDP is, is, is very, very close, even if you weren't willing to say it's exactly what you want, although I've heard Councilmember Beers that I, I think, set the tone that he would approve it as it is without, I didn't hear any conditions put on it.
Right, and, and I think just to be fair to the developer, if, and I'm just making numbers up here, but if 93 units are needed to make the math work here, if we're widening our lots, guess what? We're going to have a bunch more twin homes in here. They have no choice.
I'll consider whatever they bring to us.
I thought they were after sing, we were after single-family here. I thought that's what we were trying, so I'm kind of confused by that.
Mayor, if I could briefly?
Yeah, go ahead.
If the council were to approve the GDP as is and goes back to the plan commission for a specific implementation plan, the developer were to come back with essentially the same plan, the city would likely have to approve that because it conforms to the GDP. You have the option of imposing conditions on the GDP which the developer can accept or reject under the code. So if lot width or extra park are important, that should be part of the motion to approve the GDP. Otherwise, if you want to have more detailed discussion on that. Otherwise, if you want to have more detailed discussion on this, you should probably just refer it back to the Plan Commission if that's what the council wants to get, so they can bring back a new proposal to the city. Otherwise, if you approve the G D P, the S I P can conform the G D P and would need to be approved. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess. So if we, if we, if, if we want to put conditions on this, we're better off just sending the whole thing back.
Correct, unless you're ready to agree on all the conditions right now, which.
Okay.
Attorney General, would you agree that they don't have to put specific conditions? One condition they could put that would give staff the ability to deny the S I P or counsel the, the ability would be to say, we want you to resolve the concerns of the Plan Commission and the Park Board.
That could be sufficient.
Which I, we have no idea what the Plan Commission, there was no discussion.
Concerns were because none of them would say anything.
Well, yeah, you have limited discussion there. I think we, staff understood from the limited discussion that it was the lot size that was the primary concern on the, at the Plan Commission, but you were the chair, so I don't know if you would agree with that, that summary or not.
Couldn't drag anything out of anybody.
Mayor, what if it was the original that they came with us, to us with?
Sorry, what?
The, the original without the variance. Would that be something that we should look at harder, you think?
The original.
They had a plan. Was it seventy-three originally?
No, they're looking at this. We're not looking at that. They don't want to do that.
All right, so they're not.
This is the plan we're looking at. This is what they want to do. Am I correct?
That's correct.
You don't want to do anything else.
That's, I mean, that's.
I mean, as far as going from ninety-three to seventy or sixty.
Sure, sure. And just to, the short answer, the short answer is yes. And to provide a little context, we were, we were looking at several other pieces in town for attached product, attached homes, row homes, back-to-backs. And those ended up not working out from a site constraint or financial standpoint. So that's part of the reason why, in accordance with the housing study, we ended up trying to address a little bit of the senior housing need as well as the need for, for young family housing, I guess. That's, those are the two target markets. Mr. Mayor, if I could, it sounds like, it sounds, the feedback has been really good, and I appreciate that. I'm wondering, and I, again, just asking the question, I'm new to River Falls, would it be possible to just table this so that staff can get input from the, the council, and then we'd be able to maybe come back at another date with?
There's a motion on the floor now. If, I would think if that fails to pass, then there could be a motion to, to table it.
But can we after it fails?
You can make a motion to table at any time, can't you? I don't think you have to act on, I think you can make a motion to table at any time.
You could supersede the current pending motion, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could withdraw the motion if you want.
Or you could withdraw the motion.
Well, in that, in that case, I will make a motion to table this and return it to Plan Commission. Is that?
Or let's, let's staff work with.
Let staff work, and then the next step would be Plan Commission again.
So would we want to bring it back to Plan Commission, or it just comes straight to us? Well, I think Downing seconded.
That's up to you. I think you want to clarify your motion. Are you sending the G D P back to Plan Commission?
Or do you want them to work on concerns?
I will, I will amend my motion. I will say, we table this, we ask staff to work on the G D P and bring it back to us.
Second.
Okay, so that's the amendment?
Can't have, can't have discussion.
It's a table.
Oh, this is a table. Yep, so it's a table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Man, that was really confusing.
Thank you so much for answering.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify so that you don't leave with confusion. We understand the motion to be that staff will address with the developer park and lot size and bring the G D P back to the council.
Back to the council, yep.
And the developer obviously will have the ability to make modifications or not.
Yep.
And then we'll bring it back to you.
Does that, does that sound right to everybody?
And Chris, do we have any time? We don't, is there notice requirements or time separation, or can this be at the next council meeting?
This could be at the next council meeting if the Plan Commission's met and the developer's ready to move forward.
I think it will be difficult to, to promise that staff will get back to you in, in thirteen days.
So to clarify with the city attorney, we're not sending it back to Plan Commission.
Correct.
No.
We're not, so the Plan Commission does not need to meet before it comes back to council.
It doesn't have to.
So I think we're, we will make every effort to bring it back in two weeks, but I think it's more likely to come back in four. It'll be noticed. It'll be, it's, it'll be on the agenda. And we will assume that the council's direction is to take it off the table for that meeting, so we'll put it on as a regular agenda. That, I can do that.
Correct.
I can do that, correct. So, so we can kind of dispense with the agenda item to take something off the table. We'll just put it back on the agenda. We've, no, we're letting people know in the public right now that it's going to be on, I'd say likely in four weeks, but unless we can arrive at some quick. But I suspect they're going to need to do some kind of preliminary engineering or other changes with drawings and other, and then run their spreadsheets to see if it works, and we'll do the same, frankly. So.
Okay, that, thanks for helping.
Does everybody understand what the plan would be from here?
Yep.
So that.
Thanks for dragging us through this.
Do you want to provide, and does the council want to provide any other feedback about what staff is supposed to do?
Nope, I don't think so. Everybody okay? Yep, okay. Thanks.
Can we call you if you think of something?
You can always, yes, you can call me if you think of something. You can email me.
Okay. Uh, let's see, where are we?
We need to act on twelve as well.
Oh, yeah, we need to, so we want to do the resolution approving the preliminary plat for, or that might change.
That's going to change.
It'll change.
Yeah, I think.
Should we table that too?
I think we should.
We have to, don't we?
Yeah, you can skip, if you just skip that item on the agenda, you don't need to table it.
Take no action on it. You don't need to table it or anything.
Perfect. Okay, on the resolution approving, city administrator finalize five-year refuse and recycling contract from Waste Management. Now, take a motion on this.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. First and the second, questions? And somebody from Waste Management, Tim, is here if anybody has any questions for him. Otherwise, questions or comments on this?
I guess I've got one comment. I've been on the council for almost sixteen years. I've found a, a couple of things to be true. You can raise people's taxes and they grumble. Believe me, they do. But if you don't pick up their garbage or plow their snow, your phone will melt because it'll ring so much. You guys are making it awful hard on us with your, with, with the history you guys have had recently about not picking up on a, on that day or just general problems with delivery, with, with pickup. It's, it's making it really difficult. I, I get calls. I'm sure everybody else gets calls, but we'd really like it to not be a problem. Understood? Thank you.
I just want to point out that I appreciate the staff work on this as it saves staff time in the negotiation process, which is really healthy for the ratepayers and the city itself. So thanks to our staff for actually looking into the details of this.
Anybody else have anything on this?
Yeah, I've got a question for the city administrator. It's my understanding that in the current contract, there's a penalty clause. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that being enforced?
Uh, we did through it three times this year.
Okay, and I assume that the new contract will have one as well?
Yes.
Also, I, you know, perhaps staff can address this, but I know there, you know, there were a number of problems as the pickup day changed to Thursdays through town. And I was wondering if the staff has any idea as to whether or not there were fewer complaints, the same amount of complaints?
Yeah, we have much fewer complaints. I mean, I think we had three bad weeks. And so we issued a letter and the penalty, and I would say it's been substantially different as far as phone, phone volume.
Okay, thanks, that's good to know.
Amy White, as you know, is our, you know, manages customer service operation. It, it was noticeably better. Probably the third week that we ended up still doing a penalty, it was, that was pretty darn close, but we just thought the message needed to be sent that close isn't good enough on a consistent basis. But the one-day-a-week thing has not really caused us much pain from a operations standpoint in the city. Frankly, it's kind of easier with, we think with snow plowing and street sweeping, it is actually easier to just have a day that we cannot plan. Now, the snow plowing we'll have to do if it snows, but street sweeping in particular is easier to do the, without the cans and everything in the, in the yard. And before you do vote, I just want to clarify which, what you're voting for, because we've got some alternatives here that I want to make sure. So you're selecting, you're selecting a vendor. We had two, two, what we consider good proposals, Waste Management and G F L. Waste Management was slightly less expensive for our customers, for the, the community. But we've also had, we also had an alternate bid for Waste Management to directly do the customer service and billing. Right now, the city is doing the billing, a hundred percent of the billing, and we're doing, in our minds, ninety percent of the customer service, but I'm sure Waste Management has pretty significant customer service load too, but with, staff is recommending that you flip that. So we still expect to be involved in customer service. People can always call City Hall and say, my trash isn't getting picked up. I have this concern. My can got busted. And we will, we will move that through the system, but Waste Management is proposing to give people kind of a direct, direct ability to do that and take responsibility for it, which I have a little bit of nervousness about because I'm very confident about the quality of the customer service on our end and Waste Management. I don't manage them, so I wouldn't be in charge of their customer service folks, but it's a, I think it's a good deal for the, the consumer, for the, the end user and the price, because they're proposing to do it at a price I think that's pretty reasonable. But we're also prepared to staff if the council would like us to just continue. Currently, we're doing all the billing and we just kind of give a check every month to, to Waste Management. We're comfortable doing that. That's not a recommendation, but we're comfortable if that's what council would rather do.
So by voting yes, we're voting for them to take care of all that.
That's how I'd understood, that's how I would understand your motion right now.
I, I guess I'll just say I'm going to vote no, mostly as a protest. So I don't know, you know, the, some of the distinctions of the bid. And as Mr. Simpson knows, I trust the city's bid process and what they do, but anecdotally, it's just been bad, and I have to have dinner on Sundays with my dad, and you guys are making it really hard. And so, because whatever we're doing on the alleys isn't working. We're missing stuff all the time. And I also would like us to get furnished with a report monthly if we could for what success looks like, just so as we're going forward. Please not weekly, that, that's unfair to y'all, but either monthly or quarterly so we can kind of see longer-term trends. And also because you're not picking up the trash all that well, in my opinion, it makes it hard to say, let's give you other responsibilities. So I'll just be a no vote.
Anybody else have anything?
I'd like to point out that a representative no vote is good, but we should pass it. So they need to improve. Thanks, Mayor.
I have, I have one more comment. I'm not going to sing Waste Management's praises, but I will, I will say that in terms of historically service of I, I very much appreciate the high level of service that city staff gives us, that they have given us in responding to our complaints about this. I am pleased by the affordability with which this service has been provided over the years. I am very pleased with month, a weekly recycling service and very pleased with Mr. Morissette's favorite two weeks of the year, the spring and fall cleanup.
Yes.
I think those are, that is an excellent benefit to our community.
Anybody else?
Well, my only thought with shifting the billing and customer service to Waste Management, are we shifting a burden from what is right now conducted by the city and included in our utility bill to an additional bill that the customer is now faced with? So they'll have to set up auto pay with Waste Management instead of having it included in their utility bill. It's just a thought.
And to your point, Mr. Page, that there's going to, that's going to create some confusion with the public as well.
Yeah, back to my no. That's why it's there, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a good point. So if somebody wants to make a motion to not include that in this, feel free.
I will move to retain customer service with the city of River Falls.
Second.
Billing and customer service, okay. Chris is second on that amendment. Discussing?
Yeah, so I'm confused. What was the original amendment on, what was the original motion on the floor?
To, it'll go to Waste Management, or they'll get, get the new contract, and they'll take care of customer service and billing.
Alternate bid number one.
Alternate bid number one was the motion on the floor.
Yes.
If you amend it, you go back to the base bid. And we'll, and we'll retain billing and customer service.
And that's what I want. I would like to just make one clarifying comment on, on the billing and customer service piece. By, by not moving that forward, we would be operating essentially at status quo. We would continue with the billing. Waste, Waste Management would continue with their service of customer service that they currently provide. So we would not be absorbing the customer service from Waste Management. Waste Management would still retain that portion that they are currently providing with the assistance of our team.
And we would still, if, if we retain the customer, if we do the customer service and billing, we'll add that fee. It'll be slightly great. The, the cost to the household will be slightly greater than twenty, thirty. We probably would, I think, are we a dollar twenty-five?
Yes, currently it's a dollar twenty-five.
So understand that we're happy to do that. I would suggest you don't just absorb that into the general fund, that, that you, you know, you're essentially, you're going to have, it's going to be twenty-one fifty-five, just like that's what they were proposing. We would pay ourselves to do the billing and, because we'll be doing that work.
Understood.
Yep.
And that's still, that's still very compet, as you saw in the chart, very affordable and competitive, especially given the fact that we have weekly recycling, which almost nobody has, and we have the large pickup events. And so it's, it's, I thought both, hats off to both of them. Both of the bids were very attractive and competitive. And we'll still have alley issues, unfortunately, because we've been through three haulers while I've been here, and alleys is a challenge because a lot of our alleys don't look, feel, or operate like traditional urban alleys. They're kind of back driveways. And so we, we're aware of those issues, and we, we're also, we're aware that a huge percentage of our customer base has never had an issue with trash or recycling collection, and they're kind of oblivious to, to the things that we are talking about higher level, which is we had some consistent blocks and alleys and other things that weren't getting picked up, you know, out of the six thousand, six thousand addresses, so.
So we're keep, staying status quo, right? The amendment, the amendment is to go back to status quo. And then the original is?
Yep, so we'd have to pass the amendment.
We're going to pass the amendment.
Could we, could, could we make a friendly amendment to the, to the amendment and say that we're also going to move the dollar twenty-five into the price? I think we need to recognize the dollar twenty-five.
So do we charge that now since we're doing all the billing?
Yeah, we can, we can set that as part of our internal policy because of the,
Okay.
if you're approving a contract with Waste Management, what we're going to pay them, and then we're going to set the fee on their bill.
Okay.
Which, which may need to come back to you, and if it does, we'll do that through a fee schedule, but I don't think that's necessary for what you're doing tonight.
So any other questions or comments on it? So we'll vote first on the amendment to go back to the original contract or the original
Base bid.
Process. Options.
Mr. Mayor, was there a second?
There was a first and a second on the.
Okay.
I, I seconded, yeah.
Yep, Nick seconded. Okay, so we got a first and a second. Discussion's done. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we'll go back to the regular, the regular motion. Okay, then we'll go back to the regular, the regular motion of approving the city administrator finalizing the five-year refuse and recycling contract from Waste Management. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next move on to reports. First is EMS quarterly report. If anybody has any questions about this. Otherwise, we move on to administrators' report. And if anybody has any questions for Scott. Hey Scott, if you have anything for us.
No, I appreciate your hard work doing, doing, and I'll note that you voted against staff recommendation twi- twice or three times tonight, so.
Don't take it personally.
For those people who say you just do what staff says, this will be a meeting you can point to and say, no, we don't. Always.
All right, Todd. Are we set?
Yep.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Do you have some good news? Oh, I, I forgot my good news upstairs.
Oh.
Good news is staff did a great job and everything. Once again, you guys all worked through the confusion tonight. I worked through the confusion tonight. We came out on good ends and let's move forward.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, Ken.